Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem, and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
December 14th council meeting. This will be our last council meeting in 2021. So we appreciate you being here with us this morning. We are going to begin as we always do, and that's by asking for God's blessing and presence on these proceedings. And I'm going to invite to the microphone Pastor Reggie Williams from South Columbus United Methodist Church. Pastor Williams, thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you. Let's pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of life today. Lord, we slept comfortably because you never sleep. And for that, we give you thanks. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and to lead. And God, as we look at our city, there are so many needs that we have. And we pray for council today as they conduct the business of the city. As each member looks out for their constituents, may we all remember that we are all in the same boat. And therefore, Lord, we pray that you will help this council to have wisdom, the wisdom of Solomon, and to find balance, to be able to cause this city, to do their part, to cause this city to shine like a city on the shining hill. It's a good city in which to live, with its problems. And God, we know that there is no silver bullet, but together, we can make a big difference. As they conduct their business today, may they have that in mind. This we pray in your name. Amen.
Pastor, thank you for those words. They're very timely. And we appreciate what you and your church are doing, and we appreciate what you do. I know with the Second Chance Works program that is having an impact throughout the schools and out of our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Counselor Huff.
Pastor Williams. Good morning. Thank you. Thank you. Always good to see you. Thank you for all you're doing, some things you do behind the scenes. Got a phone call a couple of weeks ago about some things you're working on, so I'll give you a call soon and get with you. But thank you for your love for the area. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Father who which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Counselors, you should have received the minutes from the December 7th meeting. If there are motion to receive the minutes from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Davis, are there any edits, any comments to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Very briefly, an update on COVID. I know it's still in the news and it's still in the community. But I will say that despite the fact that the numbers creeped up just a little bit, as we expected after Thanksgiving, the hospitalization rate has actually stayed very, very flat. So we're staying under 30 in hospitals, and that is exceptionally good, because that's the number that we kind of look at to make sure that there are no real dangerous surges. I will also make note, we don't often talk about the mortality rate, but we have had 584 residents in Muskogee County who have passed away, but that number has stayed flat as well for a couple of weeks now. So we continue to ask you to just be vigilant and just be aware, as we have been. Don't let it stop your holiday festivities, but just conduct them in a manner in which allows you to remain safe and it keeps those around you safe. We pray everybody stays safe through this holiday season. I've got one other item that we want to bring up. It's actually a resolution that's on the, it's an add-on on the city attorney's, or it might be, I think it's on the city manager's agenda. But before I bring it forward to council, I want to make just a few comments. We just talked a little bit about COVID, and we all understand that there have been so many different impacts because of COVID. Anybody that watches the national news or reads the papers has heard about this incredible labor shortage, nationwide labor shortage. And it's impacted folks in Georgia, and it's impacted folks here in Columbus that I've talked to, and it's impacted the county government. We have, we're down about 20 drivers in Metro. We're running Saturday routes seven days a week, which means we're getting the routes taken care of. It just means that sometimes they have to wait a little bit longer for the bus to come through. We're down, everybody's well aware of the challenges we've had with our integrated waste fund and picking up waste throughout the community. We need 52 drivers to be able to just run the basic routes. We've got about 34, I think, right now, somewhere around, it's in the low 30s. And we've also, we've also seen how it has impacted public safety around the country, but specifically right here in Columbus. Our police department, very short-staffed. Our sheriff's department, short-staffed. We've seen the impact, too, in other cities when short-staffed correctional officers were overwhelmed by five prisoners who escaped down in middle Georgia. We also have problems with staffing in our MCP. So council very wisely has appropriated funding that is going to allow us to conduct a pay study, because we know, right now more than ever, it's more critical that we are competitive in what we're paying our people so that we can continue to attract folks who will allow us to continue to provide services to the public, because that's the name of the game. It's making sure that the end users are getting services. Public safety, as we know, there's also been a pandemic throughout this nation with regards to violent crime, and it has hit in Georgia and it has hit hard here in Columbus, Georgia. And we are constantly trying to make sure that we provide our public safety officers with the resources they need to be able to deal with this surge in violent crime. And one of the things that we recognize is that when this pay study is completed, we anticipate that it will allow us to plug people into a pay grade and a pay level that will put them at a livable wage, will put them at a point where they are able to feel comfortable working here in Columbus, Georgia, and we won't lose some of our brightest and best folks to other communities. But we also know that that pay study is going to take time. We're in the process of issuing an RFP. We'll then have to go through those, identify a contractor. The contractor will do their work, present their findings, and then we will implement the pay study. And that could take up to a year. That could put us in the same position all the way through 2022. We've got some critical issues, as we mentioned earlier. We have set aside over $10 million for the implementation of that pay plan. So we are already seeding our ability to fund it at some level. We will implement that pay plan when it comes through, but we can't wait that long. So we're going to ask, we're asking council this morning to consider a bridge, if you will. This is not a new pay plan. It's not an additional pay plan. It's not an answer to compression. This is a bridge to get us from where we are right now to the implementation of that pay study, once it's completed. And we focused on our most critical need, which is public safety. So our intention is to raise, and I'm going to ask Reitha Hollowell, our HR director, to come fill in the gaps, but I'm going to give you the high points. We're going to ask council to approve a plan that will allow us to increase the sign-on bonus for Columbus Police Department, for the MCP, and for the Sheriff's Department to $5,000. It's not an additional $5,000. It'll be a $5,000 sign-on bonus that'll be paid in increments throughout that first year. In addition to that, every sworn officer in Columbus Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, MCP, and CFE MS, and including our 911 dispatchers, who are also thin in their ranks, will begin to receive a retention bonus pay each quarter until the implementation of the pay plan in the amount of $1,500 a quarter. This will be retroactive. The reason we're asking council to approve this with a resolution today is we'd like to make that first payment to our employees in January. And again, this is not a pay plan. This is a bridge to get us from one critical situation to a point when we really believe we'll be able to fund that pay plan at a level that will bring us up to where we need to be to be competitive and to retain our people. So the reason we came up with the $1,500 is we wanted these individuals to have something meaningful left over after taxes. And so the idea is to pay them enough gross so that the net will be somewhere around $1,000. So if this, it will last one year. It'll sunset at the end of December of '22, because we fully anticipate to have the pay study completed and ready to implement prior to that, or it will end when the pay plan is implemented. It is, again, as I stated, it is a bridge. We have consulted with our chiefs and our warden to make sure that this is something that they believe will help them not just recruit, but also hang on to their people as we continue to do what we can to improve the numbers in our ranks and to try to make sure that we keep our city safe. So with that, I'm going to ask Reitha, if she'll come forward and walk through a short presentation for council and the public so that they can see exactly what we're talking about doing.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I want to share with you a brief presentation, as the mayor has said, with regard to public safety. This has to do with officer retention and recruitment. It's an initiative that will take effect in January of 2022 with a retroactive piece beginning, retroactive to October 1. So to begin with is a $5,000 sign-on bonus. This is for recruitment of new officers. The departments that are going to be impacted by this $5,000 sign-on bonus include the police department, the sheriff's office, and Muskogee County Prison, where those departments are in critical need of being able to recruit and retain new officers. As mayor has mentioned, it is a $5,000 sign-on bonus. As you all know now, there is already in place a $2,000 sign-on bonus, and this will complement that. So as you see there, it's the officer upon their hire and completion of the academy, that is, their training that they'll initially get, that typically takes six months, they'll get $2,500 sign-on bonus. And then, once they are released into training, they'll get the additional $2,500 for a total of $5,000 that's going to be spread over about a 12-month period. And as you'll see there in that column in terms of the average hire, the police department, based on a five-year history, their average hire is about 48 officers a year. With the sheriff's office, it's about 40 officers a year. And at the prison, it's about 39 officers a year. And then to the right, you see the total that that bonus will cost for each of those area, bringing a total cost of about $635,000. And again, this is for the calendar year of 2022. It will sunset with the implementation of the pay and compensation study that we've been talking about. So the next piece of this has to do with the retention of officers that will also impact new officers as well. So in order to help us continue to fight the fight of retaining our very valued officers, the mayor is putting forth a $1,500 per quarter retention bonus for officers. And you see the departments that are going to be impacted there. That includes the police department, Muskogee County Prison, Fire and EMS, and the sheriff's office. These are all sworn officers. You see the totals in those departments, totaling about 1,200 or so officers in public safety that will be impacted with this retention bonus. And then you see the total cost there for each department, 3.3 million for the police department, 855,000 for the prison, Fire and EMS, 2.8 million, and 2.5 million for the sheriff's office, for a total of $9.4 million for this retention bonus for police officers, all officers that are listed here in the OLOS. 911 communication texts are included in this because they bear a large portion of the brunt of what's happening with the retention of officers for CPD and other public safety departments. The mayor mentioned also, this particular incentive, retention bonus, will be retroactive to October 1 of 2021, and it will be paid out sometime in January. We expect it to be paid out about the first pay, bi-weekly pay period in January. So how this will work, this is just a very basic retention bonus schedule that I've outlined here for you, seeing the first quarter, the fourth quarter, which we're in right now, October, November, December, that's the first quarter. We'll pay it out in January. The officer must be on payroll at the end of December in order to get the bonus or the incentive pay. For each quarter, the officer must be on, they must be on payroll at the end of each quarter. And I think you all will provide handouts of this, and I'll make sure that you all have. I'll send this via email to you all as well. So now, in terms of funding for the, for this particular, the sign-on bonus, and for the retention supplement, I'm going to ask the finance director to just come and share in terms of how this is going to be funded. We've noted that there's going to be a use of fund balance reserve as well as existing salary savings, but I want her to at least speak to the funding source of this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as the HR director mentioned, fund balance reserves will cover some of the costs for this. But just due to the shortage in the offices that we have in the various public safety departments, a lot of this cost will be covered by existing salary savings that they already have in those departments. We do budget to some degree for some salary savings already, but just due to the really low numbers in the officers that we have in our various public safety departments, salary savings will cover most of the costs for this. For the departments that are a little more staff than others, we do have some that don't necessarily have as bad recruitment issues as other public safety departments. Those departments will likely utilize the fund balance reserves, but I do see this being covered mainly through salary savings, existing salary savings.
All right. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I do have a question about the sign-on bonus. I remember my father-in-law was a brigadier general in the Air Force, and he was offered the Second Star. But in order to take that Second Star, he had to make a commitment to the Air Force of three years. And he chose that that Second Star wasn't worth three years of his service. And so he retired as a brigadier general. So I use that example to ask this question. Is there any kind of a commitment on the person that we recruit to stay with us for a certain period of time, or pay back the bonus, or pay back the training that they're receiving? Because the training that they receive from the Columbus Police Department exceeds any training in the state, if not in this whole southeast region. I don't even know if it doesn't surpass the majority of the nation. So they get high-quality training here, and then they get the $5,000 bonus. Is there any kind of a contract that they're going to have to sign with us to pay us back if they don't stay a certain period of time?
That's a very good question, and it's a question that I would have. I don't know if the police chief is here, but I would like for him to speak to if an officer comes and they leave within two years. He can explain it a lot better than I. There is a penalty that is associated for those officers that come, take advantage of our training, and they leave within a two-year period. So I do want him to respond to that. There is no contract related to the sign-on bonus, other than our being able to spread it out over this 12-month cycle to give it to them. But there is no, there is no contract associated with that. If that is something that council would like to see, certainly we can engage our legal department to assist us with a contract related to the $5,000 sign-on bonus.
Well, Mr. Hughley.
I know the chief is coming, but would you just explain the bonus payout? I know you've done it, but for those watching, explain the bonus payout in increments, and then the chief can come.
Right, exactly. So the officer, once hired, they will be here six months before they see anything. They'll go through their training period. So they'll be here six months, and then they'll get their first $2,500 bonus, sign-on bonus. After the next six months, which means that they will have completed training, they're ready to go on the street independently, then they get the second five. So they're here at least 12 months before they get that $5,000 sign-on bonus. So the chief is going to talk a little bit more about the other strings, ties that requires them to stay in a period of time and penalty associated with that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, council members. Regarding the opportunity that law enforcement agencies throughout the state of Georgia have, when officers complete their training from the police academy and their field training, they have, according to state law, up to two years that they are to be committed to that particular department without penalty. And so if an officer leaves that law enforcement agency within a two-year window after receiving their training, then they're responsible for paying back the cost for training. And this is something that, over the course of the years, our department has collaborated with our city attorney's office and communicated that information to some other departments and some officers that have left. And so they've, we've tried to receive some of that money in return over the course of years. So there is something in law as it relates to when the officer receives training and leaves within two years and goes to another law enforcement agency. Now, if they leave and go to some employment that's not law enforcement-related, then it does not apply. But they have to leave and go to another law enforcement agency, and then the law enforcement agency that initially hired the person can receive, can request to receive those funds for training.
And we have recovered some of those funds if they leave within two years. And while we were focused on trying to make sure that this sign-on bonus is attractive to bring people in, in conjunction with the quarterly adjustment, that's why it's spaced out, so that they don't get it in a lump sum and they turn around and leave within two or three weeks. They're going to have to stay there a full year before they get the full, the full sign-on bonus. So Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. So does the two years include the year that they're spending getting training?
Yes, it does.
So it doesn't start after they come out of training? So really, we only, I'd like to see the study, when these new recruits, how long do they stay with us? Are they leaving right after their two, their second year? Or do they stay three years? Do they stay five years? I mean, this whole thing is about, you know, recruitment and retention. I think two years is too short, in my personal opinion. I'm not going to tell you how to do your job, but we want to retain them. So we don't want to give them all this training, and then they get to stay with us for one year, and then they're off the hook? I think that might be something that we should look into a little bit more.
Well, according to the state law, that's the guidelines we have to work within, as is written now, according to state law.
Okay.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I am glad to see that this proposal is being put out on the table today. My concerns lie with the commitment as well. Just listening here, it just seems like there's some loopholes that still that personnel can go through. We train them, we have a tremendous, the citizens, I don't know, we don't talk about this enough, but we have a tremendous training program here in Columbus, Georgia, across the board. People know that. Some people would say it's very restrictive at the same time, but we have a really good training program here. And we've always heard the concerns around this table, and, you know, and that's, that's the conversation here now on the commitment side, is that we train them, and then everybody else takes them, because we train them so well. I hear a couple things within there. I hear what the state says, but I'd like to know locally, legally, what we can do as far as a commitment or to further solidify somewhat an agreement or a contract that if we're going to continue to push resources in that area, then I think that's very, 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 very important, that the citizens know that they're getting their, so to speak, getting their money's worth, their tax dollars' worth, and that we're just not trained, they leave. Now, if they go to another law enforcement agency, there's somewhat a penalty. I don't know what that penalty is, but, you know, in 12 months, you're basically paying out a lot of money. You know, there should be a commitment tied to that. Now, if they were to go to another agency in the private sector, and I don't know if it's, let's just say, the FBI, the, you know, the Secret Service, or Border Patrol, or something like that. Now, I don't know how that plays into this, but I have heard stories where we train them, and they move into that area, or, you know, go overseas and do some kind of security, that kind of stuff, too. I'm just focusing in on those potential loopholes that deal with that concern, that deals with the concern of commitment, because I think that's important. And, you know, somewhere, I don't have a problem with what we're doing, and I support it 100%. I just want to make sure that, like Counselor Crabbe said, that we're getting a commitment. If we're going to take that step and we're going to make a, I mean, this is a big commitment on the side of the citizens and this government, then we should have a handshake and a commitment on the other side as well. I would like some kind of, that to be a little more solid, or I'd like to understand that a little bit better. And I'm sure we have time to work on that. Mayor, I don't see that as a problem in moving forward, but I think we all share that concern.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, we don't want to, but I think the solution to that is the implementation of the pay plan. I think this is a bridge. Again, this is not a substitute pay plan or forever bonus situation. This is to get us to the pay plan when we intend to look at it and make recommendations to council, that we make a significant enough investment in the pay plan that we won't be training them and having to take them. Because what happens now is because of some compression and because of some other things, when they get to about the fifth through seventh year... when they get to about the fifth through seventh year, we got people catching up with them, and that's when they're ripe for going to other agencies. So, so we're gonna have an opportunity, as a council, to, um, to stop that from happening. Because if we, if we take the approach that we don't wanna be below the average pay for police, we wanna be, if not the top, we certainly wanna be in the top tier. That's what's gonna stop our health.
Well, and, and, yeah, we, we, I'd hate to put all my chips on that, because what tends to happen is that soon as we make a decision here and we move forward, Phoenix City, La Grange, or somebody else is gonna move the bar up even higher.
Right.
And then it becomes an issue of who, who gets more competitive. So you're in a constant competition. That's my concern with that aspect of it, Mayor. But, uh, being able to fill in the gaps where our officers and our law enforcement, you know, we haven't in the past, and to deal with some of their concerns of the past today, I mean, that's a good thing. That's, there's, that, that's a positive, and I'm glad to see that as somewhat a second part of the, the package here. But, um, I, I'd still think that, that commitment side, that there may be something we can do to solidify a handshake agreement between law enforcement and the citizens and the, our local government. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Barnes?
I'm glad that, that we're, that we're moving in this direction. In fact, when, this is, this is, uh, a breath of fresh air, not only for us, you know, city council, but for the citizens as well, that we're moving in this direction, because, you know, the, um, the overall gist that I've heard is that, um, we're really not paying the men and women whose job it is to keep us safe, what we should. And, and you're right, you know, we have the best training. And, and I agree, I mean, we are fortunate to have the, um, personnel here in Columbus, Georgia, years of experience to be able to train new officers coming in. A number of them I know personally, and they, they tell me about, "So Chief, the, the training is par excellence."
Thank you, sir.
And I just know over the years, from being privy to the, some of the accolades that, that, uh, this department has gotten, it's just tremendous. But I'm glad that Charmaine brought this up, because we all know that, uh, the retention is, is an issue, and, and we have been blessed, sincerely blessed, by officers like yourself, who are cognizant of the fact that we're, we're not on a par, um, as far as pay, but for the, the good and the love of, of this city, have just decided to stay. Even with the shortages, which has put an additional burden on you as chief and, and the other mid-range officers, you decided to stay. And so even though we're offering that, the bonuses, and, and Mr. Mayor, this is a step, definitely a huge step in the right direction, and I'm glad that we're thinking about those mid-range officers, because they, Chief, as you very well know, are the glue. They're the cement in the military, the same situation. We stay not for, pay is not even an issue. For military, it's love of our country, God and country. That's the final line for military. Military don't get paid, it's the love of this country, the good Lord first, and the blessings we have here. The same thing with public safety. My son-in-law, Philadelphia, 30-some years, they're, you know, they, it's not that, it's the love of where they're at in their job, and protecting the citizens. And so I'm so glad that we are moving in this direction, but I share what Charmaine's saying, what Glenn is saying, what you verbalized, Mr. Mayor, and I'm pretty much, that's the consensus of the other councilors here, that we are looking at both ends. Bring individuals in, and then we need to look at the, um, the retention aspect of it.
Yes, sir.
And just to put a little gem in, because you know, I'm military, I know, not in uniform at all, but you know, I've been, this is a military town. And so some of my fellow veterans are saying, "Why don't we adopt something?" In the military, you get increased pay two ways, through rank and through longevity. So, uh, E4 with six years is making more than an E4 with two years. And so that's a e, real easy system. I know that, uh, but some of the mathematicians and statisticians could come up with something, but that's a fair way of doing things. Long story short, I'm glad that we're going in this direction. This is a blessing for all of us, and, and definitely the citizens. And, uh, Chief, you're doing a marvelous, uh, job.
Thank you, sir.
But we're blessed with, we're blessed with the police department, we're blessed with the sheriff's department, we're blessed with Muskogee County, Chris and my son-in-law works there, and he's working there for the love of his job. And so, um, this is a good day, a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Woodson?
Thank you very much. I asked the city attorney if he can pull up the state law, so we're understanding what it is, so I would ask for him to please quote the state law, so that we understand what we're working with when we do the pay study. And then I have a couple other comments, but I wanted to make sure we all understood what the state law says.
Okay. Here's what it says on training. This does not apply to sign-on bonuses or retention bonuses, uh, it's training reimbursement. The state law says if the, um, county employs a peace officer and the peace officer is hired by another agency, like the chief has said, within 15 months after completing formalized training requirements, then the total expense of the training, including salary paid, shall be reimbursed by the hiring agency to the state of Georgia or the affected county. If the officer is hired by another agency during a period of 15 to 24 months after, uh, completion of formalized training, then one-half of the total expense of the training, including salary, shall be reimbursed by the hiring agency to the state of Georgia or the county. So that's the state statute. It applies to training costs, not other sign-on bonuses.
And so I wanted us to read it, I wanted him to read it, so we understand what the law is. So, in reference to my colleagues' questions, and us who've been in the military before, um, a commitment can be set on some of these, um, different bonuses during the pay plan. I would not recommend it now. I think this is, um, a bridge, like the mayor says, and I support this bridge. Um, I have a high respect for public safety as a whole, because of my family also, and good friends that I have, um, in the system. So, I'm on occurrence with this. Um, I hope we can post this question and answers that we receive, City Manager, on the website, our website, plus public safety, each department to publicize it. Please send it, send an email to your employees, because it's a question and answer that could make sure that they understand what we're doing. It's only a temporary fix until we can, um, complete the pay study. Also, I want, um, the general employees to understand, you're not forgotten, because when I was asked if I could support this, the first question that came to me was, "What are we doing for the shortage of truck drivers and our city employees?" This is just temporary due to our primary, that everyone's complaint, everyone's concerned about, and this is just to try to help us reinforce our public safety to ensure this, the safety of our citizens. You are not forgotten. I wanna make sure that our government employees understand, you're not forgotten. During the pay study, you will also be addressed for, um, pay increases, and hopefully some bonuses, um, to be able to assist us, to bring us. I understand what my counselor, Davis, um, said about competition with other communities. We can only do what we can do. And I think that if our public safety sees, and, and they should see, that every year, at least once or twice a year, we're trying to, to meet their needs and their wants. Unfortunately, we're restricted with funding for certain things, and if you watch, um, the budget sessions, you can see, um, the quarterly reports, you can see. But we hear you. We hear public safety, and we hear our general employees. Our general employees really don't have a, a true voice for them, as our public safety is blessed with you, Chief, and blessed with Sheriff Countryman, to stand up for them and others. So I'm here to say, as long as I have a breath and I have the ability to say something, I'm also gonna request for general public to know that someone's looking after them. And that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate all you do, everything everyone does. And, um, City Manager, during the pay plan, let's look about some restrictions on the stuff that doesn't have to do with training, to ensure we keep our officers, because the competition's gonna get bigger. It's gonna get worse, and we're not gonna be able to compete at some level. So, let's do what we can do for who we have here, and be able to recruit those, because a lot of people coming from Chicago and New York interested, because the competition's too big over there. They got more money, but the crime's higher, the competition's higher than it is. So what are they doing? They're moving south. So there is a sun, there is a rainbow at the end of this cloud. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilor Hough?
You have my support, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning, Chief.
Good morning, sir.
And to all the public safety that's here this morning, uh, I'd like to say I understand our responsibility for the taxpayers and their dollars, but we're in uncharted waters, unusual circumstances. I've been receiving calls since Thursday from three particular people, that we need to do something that's different, something outside of the box, find the money, get it to the people, get them on the streets. Uh, the seniors are very much concerned about Christmas, and their families coming in, and them being able to be outside and walk in their neighborhoods and being safe for the holidays. So I think this is something that we need to do this morning to get the money out. It's just something we need to take a chance on. If they leave, they leave, but we have to take a chance to see if we can retain these officers and not lose anyone else, because the streets are dangerous right now. And what's going on is, without saying too much on camera, is people understand when you're short, and they run different type of games that they play, but public safety knows what I'm saying. Things go on, and you move people around, and they know when things are going on. And there was a, uh, video circulating yesterday of someone breaking in someone's car and leaving a parking lot up on the north side of town yesterday. So I am in favor of doing whatever we need to do to pay the people this morning. Uh, I, I'm in favor of this, and we can do more studying and try to see how we need to hold them accountable for the monies that we pay them. But right now, we need to just pay them and try to make the streets of Columbus safer. Thank you.
Councilor Thomas?
Um, Chief Blackman, do you, uh, know off the top of your head approximately how much, um, the training costs, so that if a, a person has to pay it back, how much do they have to pay back?
Well, that would fluctuate based upon, because salary is a piece of that law as well, so it depends upon the salary of the trainers and the associated trainees, but it can get into six digits, uh, regarding training costs.
Okay. Um, in thinking about, uh, all of this that's going on, I have a feeling that most of the officers that we lose are, um, don't come into our employment with the thought, "Well, I'm gonna stay here long enough to get training, and then I'm gonna move on to, uh, some other place." I think they come in with the commitment to the city of Columbus, and it's not until they've been here for a while that they see in other jurisdictions, uh, "Well, if I go here, I'll be making more money." I think that we need to be very careful, uh, this, this program, uh, applies only to those newly-employed people. It does not apply to the person who's been here for five years. They don't get the bonus. They don't get the sign-on bonus. We need to be very cognizant of that, and we need to make sure that we let, um, our folks know that they are part of the overall pay plan, uh, as we're looking at the entire group. Um, I, I just feel like, um, we need to, we need to do something, and as quickly as we can, I don't want us to, um, as my grandmother used to say, uh, "Do it and be sorry." Uh, but we need to do something to speak to that person who's been here five years, who's been here 10 years, uh, and, and get something in their pocket also. Um, I'm, I'm going to support this, um, and I'm going to, um, make sure that when we get this full salary report back, that it does speak to all of our employees. Um, our public safety employees who are, uh, post-certified, that's police officer safety training certified, uh, our public service officer training certified, get a bonus, a stipend, if you will, from the OLOS. We put that $3,000 in place for all of those folks. All of those folks are not included in this. It's only the, um, police, fire, jail, and sheriff's office. So we need to make sure, as some of our councils have said, that when this all comes to fruition, that we are looking out for all of those employees and, uh, trying to work out a way to retain as many of them as we can. And I think you have to look beyond the second year. I don't know if, uh, Chief Blackman, you know, or maybe, uh, the city attorney, if one of our folks, for example, leaves, does the training and leaves, and goes to one of the private companies in town that have security officers, they're not included in this payback. Is that correct?
According to that state law?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think they're, if they go to a private company, it's my understanding, based on my understanding, is if they go to another, another law enforcement agency.
Would that be like the, um, school district police force?
It's a law enforcement agency, whatever law enforcement agency they have to go to within the state.
Okay.
Yes.
Probably, um, the ones that are related to educational institutions in Columbus are public.
They're police departments.
I, I just, um, I just...
Mayor, if I could just interject so that she knows, that we have had some to go to the Muskogee County School District, and the Muskogee County School District had to pay us.
Okay. Well, I just want us to make haste slowly and make sure that we've got all our bases covered, and, uh, that we're doing all we can for as many as we can.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Hollowell, for your work, and, uh, let's, let's get this pay study done as quickly as possible, so that the rest of our employees see us working and see us doing something. I've, I've been terribly, uh, disappointed in that we, we talked about putting together this pay plan, pay study, over a year ago, and we're not getting a lot of, uh, report back, this is where we are in the study. And it's looking like it's gonna be, uh, at least, uh, another, uh, nine to 12 months before we get it back. So, um, light a fire under them, Marissa, and make them, uh, come on and do what we need to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And, and to be, to be clear, just, and I know you stated it, but, uh, the, the five-year officer and the 25-year officer will qualify for that 1,500 per quarter, so they'll get that every quarter, uh, until the pay plan is done, so...
Say that again?
So, you, you've got the sign-on bonus for the new, newer, newer, uh, police officers and sheriff deputies and, and MCP correctional officers, but those that are already on board, uh, they all qualify as sworn officers for $1,500 a quarter in, in part of this bridge, this sort of a bonus pay. So if it takes a full year, that's about $6,000 that will go to the five-year, the 10-year, the 25, anybody who's sworn officer.
I didn't understand that in that manner.
It gets confused in the way it is presented, but yes, ma'am. They will get it.
Yes.
So, and...
So all of the people who are currently employed will get something? Is that correct?
Within, within those agencies, within those agencies.
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Yes, ma'am.
For me.
All right, uh, did you wanna say something?
Well, I, I just wanted to make that clear for one. Well, I, I just wanted to make that clear for one, uh, Mayor, and I think you've cleared that up, but, so, because I know they are probably watching, but every single OLOS employee in public safety, I didn't say Metro or Public Works, but in public safety, every single OLOS person, non-elected official, not in public sa, not in Public Works, not in Metro, will get $1,500 a quarter, every single one of them, to include 911 technicians. That's the first thing, but, but, but Mayor, if I may, I, you know, I really wanted to thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in this, this matter. I, as city manager, I want you to know, I absolutely agree. And, and I'm, I'm proud that you brought this forward and, and I'm happy to hear what I'm hearing around the table from city councilors. Your leadership, they support, and I hope it resonates with these public safety agencies. And I know every department to head for the public safety agency, uh, agencies are here. And I hope that employees are listening to what you have brought, Mayor, and the support that they have around this table for the men and women out there fighting a tough fight in an unprecedented pandemic, an unprecedented time. So, I first wanted to thank you for that. And, um, and then I, I did want to just, I, I know that, I wanted to just answer that question that, that we collect from, um, even the Muskogee County School District. Uh, I, I think recently when we had officers leave, they paid us $50,000. And, um, we had two officers to go to La Grange, Georgia. We collected $42,000 from La Grange, Georgia when they took two of our officers. From the agency. The agency is the one who pays for this. When they take our officers that, uh, we've trained, the agency that took those officers are responsible for paying us and we collect. I wanted that to be very clear. We collect. Um, and, uh, and then to, um, Counselor Crabbe and Counselor Davis, I think you've made some great points. Um, but I wanted to say we'll study the matter of, uh, people leaving. I know you wanted to see maybe something stronger, uh, but, um, and of course, there's state legislation that you've heard about. Um, but, and, and if it's going to change, I think that there, there needs to be state legislation so that we're all on the same page. If we take officers from someone else, just like we collect, we gotta pay. If we take their officers, we will have to pay. And so, that's state law. Um, but, um, and if we don't have a consistent state policy, then one's gonna outbid the other. Like you said, Counselor Davis, it's gonna be, you, you beef up your package, I'm gonna beat mine a little bit better. And so, but if we're all on the same page, then, uh, there's a level playing field. So, um, I think, you know, because this is a 12-month period, I, I wouldn't recommend we go after state legislation this time. But in 2023, when we do the legislative agenda, I think we need to probably include something, Counselor Crabbe, on the legislative agenda, but that would call for something consistent statewide. And so, everybody would be on a level playing field. Um, but, uh, so I think I've responded to Counselor Davis and Counselor Crabbe and, and even Counselor Thomas, the observations that you made, but want to be clear that every public safety, fire, MCP, um, Fire MS, MCP, um, all of them, sheriff, uh, yeah, thank you, sir, that senior moment. But they all, uh, will get that. Uh, and, and just to be clear, you know, we came to you when we were short with public works drivers and the mayor highlighted how short we are with them and, and he highlighted how short we are with Metro. Metro needs 51 drivers to drive regular routes every day. They need 51 drivers. They have 27. They have 27 and they need 51. That's why they run Saturday's schedule on weekdays. But remember with public works and with Metro, we, uh, had a, um, a, uh, additional pay that we allow for them if they work their off days and, and so forth. And we will continue to work with them in that way to make sure that they are taken care of. But that's something separate from what you're discussing today. But that is just to say that, um, we have not forgotten the Metro bus drivers, the mechanics and, and the public work drivers, mechanics. Uh, we are still, um, working and will continue to work with them, uh, even though we've contracted out and brought in additional help for them. But we have a labor, labor, labor force, um, challenge and we've got to address it. And I, I commend the mayor and council for your actions to make sure that Columbus, Georgia is taken care of. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, I think everyone around this table has received calls, emails, texts about the crime situation in, um, Columbus. And I wanted to reiterate that this is, the crime rate in Columbus right now is not a public safety, it's not due to the lack of, um, resources or things with public safety. It is a morality issue. And our public safety is on the front line and dealing with it. And I call upon all the churches in this area, I call upon our citizens. We need to all come together and kind of, kind of remember what it used to be like. You know, I know it seems naive and simplistic, you know, the Andy Griffin age, but we all, you know, we all need to work together, support our public safety. Um, call in and, um, when you see something going on, let them know because that is what is going to help them take some of the problems off of the street and make our city a safer place to live and a place that we want to live. And we all need to be praying for this situation because it needs to change and we, the citizens, need to take back our, our, our city. We need to let the criminals know that we're fed up with it and we're not gonna put up with it anymore and we're gonna take our ci, our city back and it's going to be a place that we want to live. And so, I just ask everybody to pray for our public safety. Um, they're, they're in a very precarious situation on a daily basis and then pray for our city that we can take this back. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move, um, adoption of the resolution authorizing public safety officers recruitment and retention initiative.
All right. There's a motion from, uh, Counselor Thomas, second from, uh, Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? Counselor Davis is to the motion. Uh, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you for your support. We will bring a, um, a, uh, an ordinance in January to ratify what we have done by resolution today and, uh, and ask for your, your, uh, validation or verification of that. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. We'll bring an ordinance back after working with the finance director as we usually do on these things. It's a budget amendment, so we'll bring it back in an ordinance. It'll be retroactive to these effective dates and you can pass it on two readings in January.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. City Manager, I really, um, I'm glad we're having this conversation today and, uh, we've been talking about it a while and being able to prioritize. And I want the citizens to understand that, you know, this is not, you know, it's somewhat embarrassing to say that, you know, we're, we're doing this step today and, and moving forward and, and increasing pay for law enforcement because it's a crime problem. That, you don't move forward, all of a sudden you pay out all this money and then crime goes away. That's not how it works. And I really appreciate, uh, Counselor Crabbe, those, those comments. Um, what we're doing today is prioritizing because your city is in, the citizens need to know, your city is in really good financial shape and we've never had this opportunity before. Uh, the city manager spoke last week about the, uh, the position we're in, uh, one of the top cities and probably in the top 10 now in this nation, in, in the United States. And that's a good position to be in. We've never had this, quote, luxury to be able to address some priorities. We've talked about priorities and certainly the, the pay plan study and increasing pay and wages for our employees has always been a priority. We've just never had the luxury to be able to do it and now we're in that position. I think the dust is cleared and we can see a little bit better. And in light of this conversation, um, I, I think there's, I, I'm just gonna, Ms. City Manager, you talked about studying a little bit more, maybe some things we can do currently. I still think there's some more things that we can do. Possibility, I'm gonna throw an idea out that, that maybe it can be, um, across and across the board measure that could help. This is, we, we talked about the competitive issue and about retention and retaining law enforcement, but this is somewhat more on the inflationary side, on the cost of living for, that affects everybody, all the employees. And we have talked about the position that our, um, retirement fund is in now. Very, very healthy. I would just like to just expand on that idea and be able to maybe adjust the contributions. I think that's a great way that you can put money back in the employees' pockets, if it's a possibility. And I know you probably have to, to talk to some of the professionals and all, but, uh, you know, just looking at the numbers, the plan seems very healthy and there may be a way to adjust the contribution, which would in turn put more money, employees could take home money. I just want to put that out on the table in light of this conversation, that that's something we can do across the board for all the employees. And, um, I, I don't think it's far out there, a long shot in being able to do it. But I may be wrong, but I, I would like us to consider that and study that a little bit.
All right. Thanks, sir. Um, Ms. City Manager? I'll get to you.
I'm sorry. Mayor, uh, I, I was just gonna respond and say certainly we can have, um, the finance director heard what you said and I'm sure she will have our actuarial contractor, consultant to respond with a comment on that to you. So, I'll just leave that to her to get some response from our actuarial consultant.
All right. And, um, and before we go to the city attorney's, uh, agenda, I just want to thank, uh, the HR director, finance director, the city manager and deputy city manager for their work on this, try to, try to make sure it worked. We had to wait till we had a really good idea of what the final year-end numbers were gonna look like so that we could figure out the funding mechanism and make sure that we had the right numbers that would work. This is not where we want to be, but it is a, it is a step forward and I thank this council for always being responsible, responsive to any public safety need. Uh, so, uh, I thank y'all.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, uh, I, I think the public safety heads might wanna.
I should have invited them up. I'm sorry. We do have the, the warden, uh, the, the sheriff, uh, we've got, uh, our police chief and our fire chief. If y'all want to come up, if, if you had any comments you wanted to make, we would welcome them.
Again, to Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager and our city council members, let me first begin by saying thank you for the support that you offer to our men and women, Columbus Police Department. This will give us an opportunity to, to recruit and retain and work at developing strategies as we go forward even more. And so, we, we definitely will be able to utilize this as an opportunity to be able to expand and, and grow our department. We are certainly appreciative for the continued support and on behalf of other men and women of the Columbus Police Department, we look forward to doing everything we can to keep Columbus safe and, and ensure that everyone will, will feel safe walking in their neighborhoods when they're out and about various places throughout the community. So, as we utilize this funding, we will put it to good use and be able to work at bringing in the best trained officers, bring, bring in the best officers candidate and then train them up so they'd be very strong officers going forward, providing support throughout our community. Thank, thank you to each of you.
Thank you, Chief. That's our new warden, Warden Walker. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Um, I'm Warden Herbert Walker from Muskogee County Prison and, uh, I just want to stand here and be a voice for those that are not in the room. And those are my officers that I, I have the privilege of meeting the, the last three weeks since I've been here. And I must say that this is one of the hardest-working groups of people that I've met over my career. And, um, the sign-on bonus and the, the, the quarterly bonus that has been proposed, um, may allow some of my officers to not be working three and four jobs and they can go home at the end of their eight-hour shift, 16-hour shifts. And they're doing it day after day after day after day. And at some point, we have to be able to go back to them and say, "We recognize what you are doing." The city council and the city know what you have been doing for the last two years, dealing with this pandemic, keeping the inmates safe, keeping the citizens safe. I, 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 I think I can speak for some of the sheriff's officers and the jailers that are also going through the same things. They're working 16-hour shifts. They're going home, getting four or five hours of sleep and they're coming back and doing it over and over and over again. If I can go back to my staff tomorrow and say, "I went to the city council and this is what we proposed and it was approved," that would be the best Christmas gift they could get for 2021. And thank you.
Thanks, sir. Oris Sheriff Ketchum?
Good morning. Um, just want to say good morning, Mayor and Council, City Manager. Just want to say thank you for this plan. I think that this is a great, um, start to go in a positive direction. I want to thank you, Mayor, for your courage and your dedication and, uh, for you understanding the plight that we are in right now, that we are experiencing some, experiencing, um, some challenges. And this makes us more competitive when we go into the job market because as sheriff, I have to pick up the phone and call the sheriff in Cobb County and Fulton County and threaten them not to come into Muskogee County, although that they still come into Muskogee County because they understand the need to, um, to actually look for good officers. And, um, and I think that this will help us to stabilize where we are now and for us to be able to, um, to offer something, to get better candidates. And I, you know, and, and I'm so excited about it, as I mentioned to you earlier, that after the, um, after I found out the news yesterday, I wanted to go by the jail and I wanted to speak with the staff coming on. Um, I listened to what Counselor Barnes said earlier, that even about him being in the military, that the men and women that we have in our public safety are not necessarily doing this for, um, for the pay. They're doing it for the love of the citizens that they serve. And, um, when they can see the extra dollars, it means something to them because that. And when they can see the extra dollars, it means something to them because that allows them to know that even the challenges that we experience today is different than when I started 31 years ago. The equipment that we carry is different than we had 31 years ago, and so the direction that we are going in now, I can appreciate it because I think that it means a lot to the deputies now that are dealing with the mental health crisis that we have in our city, the different types of elements of crime. So thank you, Mayor, for your courage, and this is a step in the right direction. And I know that the men and women within the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office, that they're excited about this, and, and I'm just thankful to work alongside of you and, and to understand the vision that you have for our public safety. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Chief Scarborough?
Good morning, Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of the council. I don't know that I could add much more than what my esteemed colleagues have, have already said. The reality is, we're living in unprecedented times, we're facing unprecedented challenges, and those require unprecedented opportunities for us to engage. And on behalf of the men and women of Columbus Fire and EMS Department, we appreciate the courage of this council to take on this initiative and bring this forward. Our, our men and women and all of our agencies do this job and stay at this location here in Columbus because they, they love this city, and we have good people. And I think this gesture is rewarding of that. And so on behalf again of the men and women of Columbus Fire and EMS, myself, thank you for this opportunity. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Woodson?
Yes. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you. It's really wonderful to see all of public safety here today, this morning. I don't recall when I saw all of public safety together, so it's very exciting for me to see all of you, plus our mayor here, to be able to work together, to do something, to show our public safety how we appreciate it. I want to make a request of you is to, we hear on the streets a lot from our employees, not just public safety, but our employees, morale issues, things that are affecting them mentally because of the stress of the job or how they might feel that they're being perceived. I would ask if, if each department would consider, it's just a suggestion, consider looking at some kind of program for morale or appoint somebody, not yourself, because you know yourself when you were coming up the rank, when you're gonna talk to the big boss, it's intimidating, and you won't be honest. If we can put something together so we could find out what is the morale issue, because morale issue has, have many of y'all stated today, it's not always about money. We need, we need to see, and something that I learned when I was at, at TSIS was that sometimes, you know, we ask our own employees to donate and give to help others, but yet we don't know what's going on in their household, if they have even bread on the table or butter in the table. So I know I sound emotional and sentimental, but that's just me, if you know me. I just think that this is an important thing as we're looking at their well-being.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would respectfully ask you to please look back in your, in your own departments, find someone that feels comfortable to speak. And you can't please everybody, but if we can pinpoint what the morale issue is, we can resolve a big problem.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Barnes?
No, no, Mayor, we do.
Oh. And guys, as, as Sheriff Country said, this is a good step. This is by no means the end of the track. This is a step in the right direction. And gentlemen, we just want to thank you as a government for what you do.
Can I ask you to say what? Warden Walker?
Yes, sir.
Warden Walker, I, I was not here when you were appointed. My son-in-law works out there in Muskogee County Prison, Officer Butler, and you gave them, they, they are very optimistic. I know they, they spoke to you about, and I'm, I'm glad that you verbalized, many of them are working long hours, of course, you're under staff there, but you, just like with the other public safety agencies, they're committed, and I mentioned, committed individuals that are staying long-term, the ones that are there, not for the pay, but for the commitment to the city of Columbus. And they feel good, they feel very good because you came in, you're speaking to them, you're, you're interacting with them, you're, you're allowing them to vent. This is the first time in a while that, that the sense of optimism among those officers.
Yes, sir.
I know you are aware, the mayor is very much aware, and we've spoken about, about the shortages, and it's pervasive, it's, it's MCP, with the sheriff's department, with CPD and the fire department. And I'm glad we're taking this bold step, the mayor and council taking the bold step. But from the standpoint of the MCP, with the dire shortages and the concern that the officers have had, not for their own safety, but they're there to protect the, the, the other citizens that are incarcerated. But from my family, because we, we have a concern every time Jeff goes to work, that something, I say, I pray that nothing ever happens because of the, what could they do? They're short-staffed. And so I just wanted to personally, this is personal, to thank you for the interaction, going to each of the officers and finding out what their concerns are, because that's important. Many, Counselor Woodson talked about the morale.
Yes, sir.
Even with the shortages and with the constraints and the stress, those officers out there, their morale's, well, they love their job. It's not about the money, it is about the commitment to the city.
Yes, sir.
And so you have a, a lot of good officers, and I wasn't here at first when you, but I just wanted to verbalize it specifically now, since I know you're going to all the officers, all their keys, and, and you've spoken, the optimism, since you've done that, is tremendous, and I just wanted to just verbalize that, just from me, from my heart to yours, to let you know that, as, as a family member, we really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. On that day, I committed to giving Muskogee County 110%, and I did not take that lightly. I see myself in every one of those officers in that building, and that's exactly what I'm gonna do, sir.
And you projected that, by the way. You projected that, as my son-in-law said, he's, he's been there, and so you do know, and you do know the apprehension of going in there and being outnumbered, that anything can happen anytime, you know, and it's, 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 it's a, it's a stressor. But they realize that you have been there.
Yes, sir.
I like the fact that you've gone to them and let them know, "I'm the warden, but I'm one of you."
Yes, sir.
And, and that is the case with the chief of police, with the sheriff, with Chief Scarf. It's, it, we are fortunate here in Columbus to have good leadership, to have excellent leadership, starting from the mayor, down to the city manager, the deputy city managers, whatever. We're blessed in this city. But it extends also to both our, all of our employees, general service employees, public safety employees. It's the pride in this city and the commitment to their, to the city and their jobs. But I, when I was, I was not here, and I just wanted to verbalize that to you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Counselor Barnes. This time, we'll move into the city attorney's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Got several second reading items to get to. A couple of these may be delayed, but the first one up is a vote on the zoning at 6672 Billings Road.
Second.
Call in favor?
(inaudible).
It's queued up.
All right. Come on over here to vote.
All right.
And that passes?
That passes.
Oh, wait a minute. Sorry about that. You can turn my mic off.
All right. We get all the votes. Clerk?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, and that item passes.
All right. Next item is the second reading on the Unified Development Ordinance, revised minimum lot requirements, conservation subdivision, it's ready for a vote.
Go ahead and move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Woodson and second by Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, it's queued up. And that does pass.
All right. Next item, Mayor Protem, I'll turn it over to you. I understand we have not heard from the state of Georgia office yet on the redistricting boundaries.
Counsel, I would like to move for a delay on this item. We are required to wait for this to be approved by the state before we can take action, so we'll delay this. Second by Counselor Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
All right. And the plan is with Deputy City Manager Hodge, we'll bring back the second reading in January after we have that state approval that we need first. All right. The next item, Counselor Tucker, do you want to make some comments on the proposed moratorium?
When we first came, myself, Counselor Barnes, and Counselor Woodson, we wanted to come up with a, a plan of action to address what is known as the coin-operated amusement machines that are housed in convenience stores with or without gas. It was the city attorney through our mayor that suggested that we come up with a more, well, bring this moratorium to you all, that way we could take a pause to actually come up with a good plan of action to deal with this, this issue. We've been researching this, and actually, I had been in contact with the city attorney in April of this year in reference to the need to actually come up with something, to find out what can we do to actually address the issues with these coin-operated amusement machines that are in the stores. They do have a potential safety concern in some of the areas, and that was the main thing, was to address the safety, not only for the patrons, but for the owners and the workers. Because it's a lot of money that goes in these stores, and unfortunately, as we saw, someone that's dear to the community lost their life last Monday. And we really have to come up with something. So this was really the start of that action, and as the city attorney had suggested, the moratorium, and that's the reason why we put this here. However, after speaking with the city attorney, we did some research, and in other counties, they do have ordinance. I, I learned that we don't have an ordinance that governs these coin-operated amusement machines at all in our city charter. However, after doing that research and looking what other counties have done, what I'm presenting is that the city attorney comes with a list of items and actually introduce an actual ordinance that governs these coin-operated amusement machines, and that's something for us to review as counsel. And I think that was the main thing, you know, the, the main issue is the, the machines that, that are, you know, having some illegal transactions. We have some, some type of illegal gambling within the stores. And as I told the mayor, I did a, a, a ride-through in my neighborhood, well, my district, and it was a store that said Grocery Store, Grocery Store. And at the bottom, it said Food-Lotto. And when I went in that store, it had nine machines, no food, beer, cigarettes, and a lot of people at machines. It was not the intent of the store that it's saying. So if you regulate the coin-operated amusement machines, you regulate the issue. We were never trying to punish, you know, the, the good business owners that we have in this community, but it is to address the illegal transactions that are going on in our community. So after speaking with the mayor and with the city attorney, you know, I felt like it was best for us to address the actual issue, and not just them, but the city, with some of my other counselors. And also, I spoke to some of the, the business owners of those food marts and gas stations last week, and they agreed that it is some bad apples. They said it's good apples and bad apples within everything that you do, but we have a lot of bad apples. And when Macon, if, and I sent it to Counselor House, and it was 143 infractions in Macon of illegal machines, illegal. And if Macon has that issue, if Newton County has that issue, if other places in Atlanta, Savannah, and all over Georgia have that issue, we have that issue here in Columbus too. And after talking to Counselor Davis, I know that he had been working on it years ago, and we actually had an arrest here in Columbus due to that issue. This is a multimillion-dollar industry, and people are doing illegal things, and I think that it is best for us to address the, the illegal transactions that's going on. So the city attorney will come up with an actual ordinance that governs that the coin-operated amusement machines, and we will bring it up, and we want to make sure the language is pleasing to everybody. My wordsmith over there, Counselor Thomas, is we want to make sure that, that it, it is actually a good legislation for our city.
Thank you, Counselor.
You want to make a motion then on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to echo a couple of counselors, Tucker sentimental. I, I was out of town and I came back, and it was brought to my attention that we were going to delay this. As disappointed as she is, I am too, because you actually have to go to these businesses to really see what we're talking about. Hearing it, you can't envision it, you have to go see it. And it is a crime that is happening. And Mayor Protem, I have a request for you, since the mayor is absent, that we need to get some undercover officers, and we need to make some examples until we're able to go ahead and get this ordinance together to control this. I understand the reason for the delay is because some business that are buying businesses that already exist feel that we're punishing them, some businesses that are honest feel that we're punishing them, and we want to show that that's not true. But at the same time, we got a problem and we have to fix it. It's just like all the strip joints. I remember when I first came here and we started closing the strip joints, people used to say, "Oh, she has a Bible, she carries under the Bible." No, you have to understand that some people take their whole livelihoods and go there and don't provide diapers and food for their babies. You have to understand that with the way situation is now, crime does exist. When we brought up, you know, having the resort, the casino, everybody was against it because they felt people would get addicted or this and that. They didn't look at the bigger issue of providing jobs and opportunities for other people. They didn't look at the issue that people were taking buses... They didn't look at the issue that people were taking buses and leaving. Well, guess what? They're not taking buses and traveling anymore. They're going to their neighborhood convenience store and gambling. So gambling does exist in Columbus, Georgia illegally, and we need to put an example until this can be done. And I would challenge our city attorney to have something to us at least by the middle of January. I know it's Christmas and the holidays are coming, but we need to take this serious. We don't need to let it sit on the shelf and collect dust. We need to take action. So I appreciate it. And to my colleagues, Pop and Tucker, I understand your frustration, because I have it too, but we have to be conscious of our citizens, and we have to do the right thing. But that doesn't mean we don't quit the fight. The fight continues until we can protect our citizens that need to be protected. And in saying that, I'll make the motion with a heartbreak to delay it until further noticed.
Okay, there's a motion by Counselor Woodson. Well said, very good comments, appreciate you both, and your second by Counselor Tucker.
Two broken hearts saying second.
Yeah, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a statement before we...
Oh, all right, I'm sorry. I got two ahead of you, so...
Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm going to yield to her statement. She has something to say.
Do you want to yield to her? Okay. Y'all are challenging me with this system here.
Okay, my question is, are you delaying this, or are we killing this one that's asking for a moratorium, and we're going to create a new ordinance that's going to focus more on the coin-operated amusement machines?
Okay, I think the intent is to delay this, have the city attorney to work on an amendment and come back in January, and then we'll address it at that time and have further discussion.
Okay, but this one is asking for a moratorium on business licenses.
And this one will be delayed once we vote.
Pardon?
This will be delayed once we vote.
But my understanding from what Councillors Tucker and Woodson said, that they don't want a moratorium on the businesses, that they want to focus more on the problem at hand, which is the coin-operated amusement machines. And so it seems that it would be better for us to just kill this one and come up with a new one that, you know, to kill the one asking for a moratorium and then bringing in a new one that focuses on the coin-operated machines.
Either way you'd like to handle it, but in effect, that is what we're doing by delaying.
In effect, in effect, this being tabled.
So how do I handle this? Do I ask for an amendment to the motion that was made to delay?
Right, that would be a point of order would be to ask for an amendment to the motion before we vote, and we haven't voted, so...
I'm going to let her just restate her motion.
Okay. There you go. Counselor Woodson.
Sorry about that. Okay, my motion is to remove...
Move to defeat.
Remove to defeat this item, and it's second by Counselor Tucker.
And the second by Counselor Tucker. Madam Clerk, do you have that?
To defeat...
Defeat, yes.
To defeat this item.
Item number four on the city attorney's agenda. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Okay, that item is defeated, and again, we will look at bringing back a draft ordinance. I know some jurisdictions have looked at limiting the number of machines that can go into a particular business, and the police chief is working as hard as he can on the enforcement piece, and I know the mayor will be in discussions with the police chief about illegal machines, but we'll bring something back in January.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, just a minute, and to Counselor Woodson's request of the mayor's office to talk with the chief about some undercover operations, and we'll get that done. We have a couple more speakers, the city attorney, Counselor House.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll be brief. I just wanted to show my support to Councillors Tucker, Barnes, and Woodson. I concur with the concern about the issue, and I'm glad we're going to look at it and come back with a draft ordinance, because I read the ordinance from Macon, and it looks like something that we need to consider, because we have a problem, and we've got to figure out how to address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barnes.
I was going to make the comment that Shawn May made, because we don't need to, why do we need to hold it a moratorium? We want to actually come back and do it by way of an ordinance, so I just wanted to clear up my confusion and make sure, but she did that.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the other comment I want to make is that prior to us discussing, we had a group of individuals who came, and were actually verbalizing the problem they were having on Far Road. But all of us know, I know there's not a council district that is not having the same problem. And my concern is, when people feel unsafe about going somewhere, especially senior citizens, when, who have to, who don't have transportation, the only places that they have to go to is there to pick up incidentals. When they can go in there and they see five or six, seven people standing around, it makes them feel uneasy. And then, if you look at some of the outside of the places are not, are very unkempt, we should not have to, we represent, and all of us see it, there's not one of us here who cannot see and realize that it looks somewhat ominous to go, and we have to be sensitive to the concerns of the citizens. And so I'm glad that we're, so this is overdue, and we just took a hiccup by not going through the city attorney and looking at other areas, and I think that we're moving and definitely moving in the right direction for this. And the other thing that came up, you know, we have, you don't have to have all kinds of degrees on the wall. We have so many people, just have common sense trumps, to me anyway, because my wife is, I might have all the degrees and stuff, but I'm so thankful for my wife, because she has that good rural Mississippi common sense that trumps a lot of the things and all the degrees that I have on the wall. And someone said, you know, there was a disagreement about the terminology of it, and it made me think of that saying, "A rose by any other name still swirls a sweet." So regardless of where you want to name it, this is this, it's a grocery store, this might be this or that. It is a situation that has evolved here in Columbus, Georgia, that we need to deal with and put constraints on and put parameters around to make the citizens feel safe. That's primarily what this is about. So I just wanted to bring, just wanted to bring that up.
Well said, well said. Thank you, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just, you know, I think this is being handled the right way, okay? I think everybody's sensitive to the issues, and I stated that last week. I think it's now being handled the right way, and I'm looking forward to what the staff can bring back as a matter of recommendations. But let me just state this, just for the information for some council members that are unaware of how these businesses operate. These amusement machines that are out there are heavily, heavily regulated by the state. Each machine has to get an annual license, has to get a sticker from the state, it's handled by the lottery division. We talk about the host scholarships and jobs and things. I mean, it's all part of that operation, and they collect revenue and they use it for, to support scholarships and things like that. But it's allowed in the state, and actually, the Lotto Division has an enforcement division, and quite frankly, these machines, a lot of people don't know this, but they're wired straight into the state, and they can turn them on and off whenever they want to. There's a minimum and a maximum by state regulations, a number of machines that can be had or held in these stores, and, you know, that's important to understand here. So I want everybody to understand the limitations that we're working with, but at the same time, Counselor Woodson, if you really want to make a difference, I think this is something that you might want to suggest putting on legislative agenda list and ask the state representatives to look into, because it truly is a state matter, and it's truly handled through the division of the state lottery department. So that's how you really have an impact here. I think you're going to find out that we're very limited in what can be done, so that's just for your information. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Tucker?
Thank you, Counselor Davis. I actually was going to ask for us to add that to the 2023 legislation agenda, and it is nine, it's nine, it's nine machines. You want to do it in 2022?
This year, this year, 2022. Right?
Well, I'm not, since we already submitted our agenda, I didn't know if we could add it to this year's agenda. Can we?
Yes, you can, be an add-on. Need to, you could do a verbal resolution today to ask them to further regulate the machines in each county, or, and then bring back a written one in January.
Okay, can we make that an add-on?
So you're asking the city attorney to draft a resolution for...
Correct.
Should we do an oral one today?
Yeah, I would go on and do a verbal resolution for the state to study the coin-operated amusement machines and further limits placed on the machines, and further measures that will aid law enforcement in each county.
I make a motion for us to add that, add-on.
Okay, motion by Counselor Tucker to city attorney to draft a resolution to the legislative delegation to help us with this issue we're having with the convenience stores.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
As soon as that's passed, the first meeting in January, I guess that second Tuesday, then the clerk can get it up to the legislative delegation members. And in the meantime, we'll also be looking at possible limitations similar to what Macon has done on the number of machines.
All right? All right.
Okay, Mayor Protem, the next item up is the GDOT routes for radar use in Columbus. This is ready for adoption.
Motion by Counselor Woodson, second by Counselor Tucker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? How do we get a vote?
Next item, mayor, is the no parking restrictions, Wenton Road-Lenwood Boulevard.
A motion by Counselor Woodson, and second, I think I heard, Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. Not sure which is queued and which is not. Bruce, you keep helping me with this now.
Looks like it passed.
It passes.
Okay, number seven would be the budget reconciliation.
Motion by Tucker, seconded by Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry. And it passes.
All right, now we've got some zoning public hearings. Mayor, the first one up is for property at 4020 J Street, going from neighborhood commercial to general commercial, recommended for approval. Is the petitioner here today? I believe they were. All right, come on up, sir, and give them your name and address, since we didn't see you last week.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm Jay Blackburn. I'm at 420 J Street.
Can't hear you. Speak up a little louder.
I'm Jay Blackburn. We're at 420 J Street.
Okay, is there, what's the plan for the property?
We'll be there from seven to five during the week, Monday through Friday, but it's based for storage of material and equipment.
Okay, there's construction, there's construction, I think that's what we talked about earlier.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Blackburn?
I don't know.
Okay, we'll vote on this in January at the first meeting. I believe it's second Tuesday in January at 9:00 AM.
January 11th.
January 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you, sorry.
Anybody else in the audience want to be heard on that petition? Okay, that hearing is concluded. Next one up is property at 6301-6313, Macon Road, the Bloomers Nursery petition, recommended for approval. Any questions around the table? Give them your name and address, since you're here, Mr. Smallman.
Ernie Smallman, 6 West 7th Street, Columbus.
Is this an expansion, or...
No, we're asking to rezone from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. Bloomers has, is consolidating their location to their midtown location, and we have a purchaser for the Macon Road location, and their use requires general commercial.
All right, any questions? Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this petition?
I don't see any hands. No questions from counselors.
All right, we'll vote in January. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next item up is the petition at 3202 Edgewood Road, going from residential multifamily to a residential office with conditions. This is the underlying zoning for that piece of property. The planning department recommends approval with the conditions, planning advisory recommended approval. Mr. Portishev is here, is attorney for the petitioner. Going to let him speak and hear from any engineers or related folks with that application, and then we'll hear from anybody that's opposed in the neighborhood. Mr. Portishev, you can go ahead.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Rob Portishev, and I'm representing Municipal Communications, and shortly I'll introduce Peter Corey, who is the CEO of Municipal Communications, and he'll introduce his staff and then give you a lot more detail on the plan. But in general, we're asking council to approve zoning on 3202 Edgewood Road in Columbus, and having it rezoned from RMF-1 to RO residential office. We're also asking for a special exception to erect a cell tower, and as the city attorney said, it's previously been approved by the PAC, and it's even been approved by your own planning department. But before I bring up, Mr. Corey, I want to tell you briefly why I'm in favor of it, because it's actually would service my house and my neighborhood, and I do understand that there's been some opposition to this tower, and you'll be hearing from them, but I live on the corner of Everett Drive and Hilton Avenue, and it would be served by this tower. And my experience is that if my internet is out, the, my Wi-Fi is out, my coverage on my cellphone is one bar. It's abysmal. It means I can barely download stuff, barely be able to use my phone, which is critical to me. And during the pandemic, like a lot of you and a lot of people in the United States, I worked from home, and I continue to do that periodically, and my experience is like everyone else in my neighborhood, and that is that more and more our lives are revolving around the internet and especially cellular service, and it's critical that we have a real strong network signal, not just for information and work and entertainment, but also for safety. My alarm system works off of the cellular network. And in fact, just the other day, y'all recall, we had a storm pass through on Saturday, we had no power, and that meant that I was exposed, because... And that meant that I was exposed because we basically had no cell coverage because I'm in that gap of coverage that this tower is there to take care of. You know, I know there's opposition. I know there was a petition of about close to 100 people. This area serves 8,000 people. And I'm one of those 8,000 people who are for it. And I'm not telling you anything you don't know as city council, but you often don't hear from people who are for it, people who want it because they trust that you're going to look out for their best interest. Because it does take courage to go against a bunch, you know, voices coming up in person saying that they're against it. But I remind you that those same people who are coming up and objecting, probably the same people going to, who would have objected to telephone lines going up in the neighborhood running across the street, probably would have objected to a whole bunch of other things going on because that's a sign of progress. It's always uncomfortable, but this is something that we dramatically need. So without further ado, I want to introduce Peter Corey, who I just explained is a CEO of Municipal Communications, and I'll let him get the ball.
Good morning, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I'm Peter Corey. I'm CEO of Municipal Communications. We're an Atlanta-based company. We specialize in projects just like this, working in suburban, urban areas. I'm joined by John Trotmoreton and Harris Corey from my staff, and also by Anthony Purnell from T-Mobile, who's a radio frequency engineer. We're really here to answer questions that y'all may have. You know, this, people hear cell tower and, you know, well, we don't want that. Well, the fact of the matter is, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Dish, these people will all come in and invest a million dollars at this site, and they don't do it for the fun of it. They do it because they need to serve their customers. They've spent hundreds of millions of dollars on licenses to serve Muskogee County and the city of Columbus. And to do that effectively, they need your assistance. Y'all have allowed us to build three towers in Columbus over the past five years. We appreciate that. I think we, you know, lived up to our end of the bargain. They've all been, you know, well-done projects. This project in particular would be a step above anything else we've done here. We have a design that we came up with some five years ago where, unlike some of the monopine towers you've seen, where they have a few branches on them, and you say, oh, I guess that's supposed to be a tree tower. These are actual towers that I take pride in the fact that I helped design. The branches start at 16 feet at the base and go up, you know, decrease in length as it goes up, and they look like trees. You know, you can tell they're a cell tower from a distance, I guess, but it's, they're certainly, you know, very well-received once the projects go up. There's, it's very typical to have opposition to our projects. We do these in very sensitive areas like New England, you know, the places in Virginia where it might be a battlefield, something like that. And once the fray's over and the tower's up, people go, oh, okay, well, that wasn't so bad. We've got pictures of some of the towers we've done. One in particular, the Atlanta Country Club, where the typical home prices are anywhere from a million to $10 million. That is one of our towers right there. It's the same size, the same height, everything we're talking about building at this parking lot at the Shrine Club. And as I said, once, you know, once the anxiety goes away and the tower's up, people just are excited about the service. Why don't we show the photo sims, Jonathan? So these are actual photo simulations of what the tower will look like at that location. Why don't you move it up a little bit, Jonathan? So as you can see, yeah, it's, it has, because of where we live in the state of Georgia, because of the terrain, because of all the beautiful trees we have, you have to be above the tree line. We don't want to build a bigger tower than we have to. This is, as Anthony can tell you, this is something that they require to provide adequate service.
I have a question, sir. Excuse me just a minute.
Yes.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. How tall will the tower be?
150 feet.
Okay, thank you.
As you can see, you know, this is, it's in a parking lot. So at the end of, at the end of the day, it's our job as, as a developer and as a conscientious part of the community to try to find a location that has the least visual impact possible. As I said, we've done these in 27 states, and it's rarely ever do we find a better situation than this. And at the end of the day, you know, there's a, you know, it's a convenience factor, it's the fact that, you know, you want your phone to work. I mean, this is part of our lives, right? This is just something you have to have. From a public safety standpoint, when I walk my dogs, I always have this on me. Because if I see something in my neighborhood going on, I'm not going to pull a gun on somebody, but I'm going to pull a phone on them. So when it's all said and done, it's, it's a public safety issue, and I can go into that with some specific examples. Not only do you need to be able to contact a 911 operator, they need to know where you are. And with your current coverage and capacity, it's very possible that they would not be able to pinpoint where you are if you called in an emergency. So you may make that call, you may get the call off, but they won't be able to find you. In fact, we built a tower last December at a church in Acworth, Georgia, Wildwood Baptist Church, and we had to go through a process on that, a legal process. Well, while that process was working through the court, at a choir practice, one of the gentlemen had a stroke. They called 911. Nothing, nothing happened. Helps on the way. Well, they sent that ambulance to another county because the coverage was so poor that they could not pinpoint where they were. So they had to go flag the ambulance down. The man lived great, but during that period, who knows how many 911 calls weren't adequately covered? That's just one I know of. In your, in this one area, as Mr. Portishev points out, there are 8,000 residents. T-Mobile, this is just T-Mobile, in the past six months, they're, back starting in June, there were 572 drop calls. The next month, there were 683, then 935. As more of these devices are activated, the coverage and capacity gets worse exponentially. So it's what you have now, it was a problem five years ago. It's going to get worse, and it's going to get worse as these devices get more powerful and more people have them.
I have a question, sir, just a minute.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
I have several questions, if you will. One of them is for Director Jones. Is the required tree coverage one of the conditions that has been set for this? Or is this up to the company to provide?
Counselor Thomas, would you mind repeating the question? I want to make sure I got it clear in my head.
The pictures that they showed of the trees, is this something that the PAC or the planning department has required as additional part of this? Or is this just something that the company has?
For existing towers now that we've had in the past, yes, we've gone through that process, where we have required them or encouraged them to camouflage them as best they possibly could. As he, as the gentleman stated, the ones we have with trees, and the one I'm thinking about is off of South Lumpkin, excuse me, off of North Lumpkin. It's, it's a tree in name only. I mean, it's got a tall, it's got a tall structure, and it's got branches at the very, at the very top. This one, though, is different to me. I have not seen this before today, but this one really reflects more of a tree than to me, what I've seen in the pictures and some of the things I've seen in other places, in other communities, in trying to camouflage these items.
Rick, I guess a follow-up question. This is the underlying zoning. If they come back for a special exception request, this type of condition for this type of stealth configuration could be put in there.
Then, you're, Mr. City Attorney, you're right, it's probably more appropriate to address a condition of that type under the special exception. Because what you're asking to deal right, right now with is just a zoning classification itself. Does the zoning match or meet the requirements of the area more than anything else? That's, that's what I, to me, what you're charged with in terms of looking at the zoning. With the understanding that the rezoning is coming because they have to have that in order to have the cell tower for a special exception. But that's, that's, to me, that's a separate issue right now because the real issue is, land use-wise, does this meet what we're looking for in the UDO under zoning? And if you say yes to that, then we can start talking about the special exception, in my mind, from that standpoint.
One other question, Mr. Jones. Do you happen to know where there are other cell towers in this general area?
In this general area?
In the general area of the?
I only, I only refreshed my memory this morning by looking at the application. In their, in their packet, they provide the distance requirements in terms of where they're from, existing towers. That is shown in their application. I'd have to go back and actually pull our map out again and look at it to see.
I can answer that question.
Mr. Corey, I'm, like a lot of the other counselors, I'm sure, around the table, I've received numerous phone calls and emails and so forth about this issue. I have received three that say I'm for it. The other, however many there are, have said, I don't want it. And for various and sundry reasons, one of them being, they're ugly. But what you've shown us, I think, alleviates some of that. One of the issues, though, that has been brought up is that the cell tower emits a, I don't know what you call it.
Radio, free business.
A radiogram to, that is detrimental to your health. Would you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. So it's really interesting that, you know, you know, we're surrounded by radio waves. What the cell equipment does, and again, Anthony's an expert in this area, is it takes a naturally occurring radio frequency and sends a signal on it. And by the way, it uses the same household current that these TVs do. It's not some, you know, giant bolt of electricity going out. It's, it's, you know, household 110, 220 current. So it's, it's really, it's like hanging some flat-screen TVs up on a tower, you know, 130, 140 feet up here.
And one other question that I have, I'm sure you are aware that about two years ago, a little, maybe a little more than that, we voted not to allow this change in the zoning.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question to you is, what has changed in that three years that makes me, it makes it necessary and it makes me want to change my vote?
Well, and, and it really comes down to funding. It costs so much funding, it costs so much money for us to build a tower in one regard. And again, these towers with a few branches on them, we spend $100,000 more than one of those towers. Because at the end of the day, I have to live with myself, right? I don't want to put up something ugly and save a few bucks or lots of money. So the other thing is, the carriers have to invest a million dollars each in the site. And so it's not uncommon, they say, they, we're constantly giving them updates. Here's, here's where we're going. And as soon as we got a thumbs-down vote from y'all, they moved the money. So they said, don't worry about it. We're going to, we're going to go spend that money somewhere else, but keep working on it. And so Mayor Portishev, who was representing us then, said, Peter, let's, let's let it settle. And, you know, just, and I wasn't under any immediate pressure to get this project done. Well, in, in that time period that's transpired, as you can see, just month to month, the drop calls are increasing steadily. And on top of that, there are 5,400 911 calls on T-Mobile's network alone each year here. So the area's getting more dense, there are more, more usage. The congestion issue, as Anthony can describe it to you, is getting worse. And so they're behind the curve. But they only have so much money. And in the interim, they, they acquired Sprint and did some, you know, some big things to kind of, you know, in a macro sense, you know, make their national network as good as they could make it. But they are always trying to, you know, fill in these critical gaps like they are here. And again, it's a million dollars they don't want to spend, but they feel compelled to spend it. And each carrier will follow them. And in fact, this was originally an AT&amp;T project. And AT&amp;T bought DirecTV, and they spent their money other places, but they are coming back to us now and say, we've got to go fill in these gaps.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Counselor.
One other thing that I should mention is that?
Excuse me just a minute, Mr. Corey, we have one other question.
Yes.
Counselor Crabbe?
I just wanted to answer Counselor Thomas's question of where the cell towers are. There is a cell tower on the CSU campus near the intersection of Warm Springs and East Lindsey, kind of back behind that liquor store and Burt's Butcher Shop. And then there is also another cell tower that this company installed on the corner of College and University. And I was not on council when that one was approved, but I, I have heard that they were going to maintain that corner landscaping, and it has not been maintained. I've asked Mayor Portishev in the past if he would contact this company to go out and take care of it, and they'll do something. But if you guys drive by that intersection, you tell me if that's the way you would want it.
Can I, can I respond to that real quickly?
Sure, go ahead.
You know, we met, you know, and you mentioned that to me. I had already sold that tower. I went back and had the purchaser of that tower, American Tower, go in and replace all the ground cover with river rock.
That's number, have you driven or passed it?
Yes, ma'am, I have. Yeah. And, you know, it's, again, I sold the tower because incrementally, you know, on a regular basis, we have to do that because I'm not a public company. And, you know, they maintain that quarterly, which is typical, if not more than typical. But it, but again, as I've always said, I'll be happy to, you know, get in contact with them, and we have been in contact with them about your, about your issue with that. What, the one other thing I wanted to mention is that most towers built today still have, like LTE equipment put, put on them, which, you know, helps with voice and data tremendously. This tower, from, from day one, will have 5G equipment. The difference between 5G equipment and everything else is, number one, your, your device is going to be, work much better, you're going to have much more robust service to each device. But more importantly, you'll be able to have a box in your house that controls all of your internet, TVs, everything, wirelessly. They'll do it at a faster speed and for less money than a cable company. So it'll bring a new piece of competition to the neighborhood, and they will be able to get better entertainment, information services at a more competitive price, perhaps as low as half of what they're currently paying. So with that, let me just, you know, see if there are any more questions, and I'm happy to address any questions the neighbors have. happy to address any questions the neighbors have.
Councillor House.
Thank you, Mayor Portecheff. You mentioned 5G, and that's what prompted the question that hit my head. I've seen 5G transmitters go up all over Columbus, including my own neighborhood, and they're on about a normal-sized telephone pole. Why does it take a 150-foot tower to bring 5G to that neighborhood?
That's a great question, and Anthony can address that better than I can. But at some point, it's a hub-and-spoke type design. You need a macro tower to service the smaller towers. Because at some point, it all has to be backhauled to a central office, et cetera, et cetera. But you can't have, in Las Vegas, you could perhaps have nothing but small cells. But with the trees and the terrain we have, it's not possible.
Okay. And there are no further questions. Mr. City Attorney.
All right. Did y'all want to have anybody else speak for the application?
We have Anthony Purnell here. If anybody has any technical questions, he's an architect for this network.
All right. If you would, let's get him up, get his name and address for the record anyway.
Okay.
And see if we've got any specific question. Then we'll hear from the neighbors.
Good morning.
Good morning. Name and address, please.
My name is Anthony Purnell. Address is 955 Woodland Run, Smyrna, Georgia, 30082. So, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The one reason why we want this tower is because, as you mentioned, there's a tower on CSU's campus. So, that tower is getting congested, or it's getting overloaded. And so, once it gets to a certain threshold, consumers will not be able to make a call on that site. So, we need this particular site to offload the site from CSU to where we can have better service.
Councillor Crabbe.
Can you put the 5G technology on the already existing towers, like the one at CSU or the one on the corner of College and University, instead of building another tower?
Yeah, we can go ahead and put 5G technology on that tower as well. But as mentioned before, we have a lot of devices on that tower. So, that tower is still going to be forecasted to overload, which we still would need a new site to help that, to alleviate that problem.
Okay. Any other questions around the table? If not, we'll hear from other folks that are here this morning.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this proposal? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's all for now. If the neighbors want to come up, raise your hand. Come on up, give your name and address, please. If y'all have a spokesperson, that's fine, too.
If you could, all those that are speaking, if you could, try not to be redundant in respect the time of others. Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Catherine McCamey, and I live at 2931 Mary Ann Drive. We do have a spokesperson, but I wanted to just sort of make a response to some of the comments that I heard. I'd like you to know that I want better cell service. I do. I think that we need to have our devices and be able to call 911 and all of those things. But with respect to Mr. Portecheff's comment about him being in the neighborhood and living at the corner of Averton Hilton, he doesn't see that outside of his bedroom window. All of us that are in the neighborhood around that area, we pass by the Shrine Club all the time. If you're going to put up a tower in that location, why not one street over, which is already zoned commercially? Because I did, like I said, I do believe that we need to have that type of service, but I don't care how much camouflage you put on it. It's still, it's detrimental to future property owners, I mean, and all that kind of stuff. And I know that my neighbors have other things to say about it, but I just wanted to put that out there because I'm not opposed to the cellphone service, and I know we need a tower to have it. But one street over is already commercial, so it just doesn't seem to me to make any kind of sense to do it here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else would like to speak? Come on up, please. If you could, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Justin D. Felice Antonio. I live at 3013 Sumac Drive, across the street from Richards Middle School. I just have a brief statement that I'd like to read to you.
Go ahead.
So, I live across the street from Richards Middle School and less than half a mile from the Shrine Club. And I'm a tennis coach and yoga instructor in town. Today, I'd like to express my opposition to municipal communications' proposal to rezone 3202 Edgewood Road from residential multifamily to RO for the purposes of constructing their undisguisable 150-foot cellphone tower, which would be close to 100 feet above the existing tree line. Such a tower is not compatible with the residential nature of our area, as hundreds and hundreds of houses surround the proposed site. If such a tower were erected, the aesthetics, property values, and general desirability of Hilton and Clubview Heights, Mojino Woods, and surrounding neighborhoods would be adversely affected. Although the Federal Communications Act of 1996 does say that health concerns are not valid reasons for a city to deny zoning for a cell tower or antenna, property values and aesthetics are. And it's undeniable that due to existing public perceptions of radio frequency emitting towers as aesthetically hideous and among some groups, possibly posing long-term dangers to health, more and more people are willing to pay less and less for properties in the vicinity of a cellphone tower. In fact, in a survey conducted in 2014 by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy, quote, "94% of respondents said a nearby cell tower or group of antennas would negatively impact interest in a property or the price they would be willing to pay for it." Indeed, as real estate broker Tina Canara said in a New York Times article on this subject, quote, "You can see a buyer's dismay over the sight of a cell tower near a home just by their expression, even if they don't say anything." And in a 2006 article titled "The Impact of Cellphone Towers on House Prices in Residential Neighborhoods," published in The Appraisal Journal, which is edited by the Appraisal Institute, one of the largest professional organizations for appraisers in the world, the authors wrote, quote, "Even buyers who believe that there are no adverse health effects from cellphone base stations, knowing that other potential buyers might think the reverse, will probably seek a price discount for a property located near a cellphone base station," end quote. Certainly, a look at the scientific debate over health risks of radio frequency radiation, particularly 24/7 exposures by nearby base towers, suggests that this trend of seeking price discounts over properties near towers will only intensify in the future. In 2018, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services National Toxicology Program published the results of a two-year study in rats and mice commissioned by the FDA. The study showed 2G and 3G radio frequency exposure to be carcinogenic. The NTP scientists were able to show clear evidence of tumor growth due to the exposure. So, it is simply not appropriate to compare erecting a tower to hanging flat-screen TVs, as the applicant tried to claim today. Dr. Ronald Melnick, a retired senior toxicologist at the National Institutes of Health, summarized the study by saying, quote, "The assumption that non-ionizing radiation cannot cause cancer or other adverse health effects other than by tissue heating is wrong." I am not a professional scientist, and I'm not here speaking to you to make an argument about whether or not cellphones or towers pose health risks. I am simply pointing out that the scientific debate over risks of cellphone base towers is still unfolding, and that there are potent reasons available today for potential home buyers to perceive towers as dangerous and not want to live next to them, or at the least, to seek price discounts for such properties. How much discount? It depends on the buyer. But the Appraisal Institute cites cases of up to a 20% reduction in value of properties that happened to be where cell towers were erected. Regardless, a scenario involving any property devaluation would be a violation of our neighborhood. I'm not against cellphones. I'm not against telephone lines. What I am against is cell towers placed in people's backyards, particularly by companies who seek to profit while misrepresenting the deleterious effect or deleterious impact their tower would have on the property values and quality of life of local hard-working people. And I would say that if you click around on Google Maps or yourself drive through the neighborhood streets immediately surrounding the proposed site, like on Gale and Lawrence and Larry Drives or Barbara Avenue, and if you consider the sheer height of the tower would be visible for nearly a mile circumference around, you'll find that the photos that the applicant shows with regard to screening and so forth grossly misrepresent how invasive their tower would be. Now, I think that's a poor Photoshop that they presented today, trying to show that the tower would not look as tall as it would be. There is land in the surrounding area already zoned for commercial use where a tower could be legally erected. Additionally, the fact is that according to our experience, as well as T-Mobile's online coverage map, cellphone and 911 service in our area is ample. I don't believe that this is a coverage issue, but instead a carrier issue. We've talked to a lot of our neighbors, some of whom who have AT&amp;T, who say they have poor coverage, but others like ourselves who have T-Mobile, they'll have robust coverage. So thus, the argument that without the tower, Shrine Club cellular coverage would disappear and people's safety would be threatened is false and doesn't justify rezoning our neighborhood. And it's my belief, I'm just speaking personally, that the applicants keep pushing this rezoning at this particular location, not because of coverage gaps, but because of the highly, of a highly lucrative contract municipal communications managed to sign with the Shrine Club back in 2014 under potentially suspect conditions. And that contract is under dispute. And if you have any questions about that, Larry Wisniewski is here from the Shrine Club and can talk about that if you wish to hear him. So, as you consider this rezoning, ask myself, would I want a 150-foot cellphone tower in my backyard or in the backyard of my loved ones? Is this common sense? If the answer is no, deny the applicant's request for rezoning, as city council did several years ago. Otherwise, you set a precedent that hurts homeowners throughout Columbus. And also, just speaking from a lot of us in the neighborhood, we would just really love for that area of the Shrine Club to continue to be a community center. And if the Shriners ever decided to leave in the future, we prefer that to be a residential area, some kind of condos or houses that are built. So, all the best. Thank you for your time. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Doesn't appear to be any questions. Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
State your name and your address, please.
My name is Christine D. Felice Antonio, and I live at 3013 Sumac. Thank you for the opportunity to voice our opposition as citizens and to participate in this process. You know, my husband and I bought our home in 2005. We were very excited and attracted by neighborhood schools. We loved that it had a very community feel with lovely yards set back off the road with children walking in the neighborhoods and with sidewalks that, you know, actually encouraged an active lifestyle that we very much support. When you buy a home, there's a certain expectation when you buy into a zone. You know, earlier, you were speaking about a commitment to the city of Columbus, and I fully support that. I work at Fort Benning. I'm committed to this area. But that commitment goes both ways. So, when you buy into a neighborhood, you have a level of expectation about what that zoning actually is. And so, right now, I would like to ask for my neighbors who had that similar expectation and feel like some of this proposal that has been ongoing several times now belies their trust and their commitment to the neighborhood. If I could get the neighbors to stand up. Thank you very much. So, I don't want to, you know, insult anyone, but just as a reminder, again, I work at Fort Benning, so I consistently read regulations, you know. We're a very regulatory organization. And so, I have to remind myself sometimes what the standards are. So, I'd like to read what the zoning is for a residential multifamily one. It's used primarily to provide a high-density residential zoning district that allows a variety of dwelling types and maintains an overall residential character. I say that a little louder. By allowing a limited number of commercial uses, such as assisted or personal care facilities and bed and breakfast, prohibiting other commercial uses, again, I say prohibiting other commercial uses, allowing uses that enhance residential areas such as places of worship, elementary and secondary schools, parks, establishing property regulations that are consistent with that higher-density residential concentration. So, if you could put on the overhead at number one, just to get you, give you a flavor of what that is, can you turn that landscape so we can see that and back out, maybe? This clearly is residential. Lots and lots of houses. Right there at the intersection of Edgewood, you can see the schools, the neighborhood schools. We love to see the kids walking to school, to Richards, to Clubview, and to Hardaway that is north of there. But clearly, the neighborhood character that could potentially be eroded if this is rezoned becomes this neighborhood feel that it is safe with children walking to schools. Some of that character for me is the trick-or-treaters. There's throngs of trick-or-treaters at Halloween. There are neighbors, you were talking about safety, neighbors overwatching other neighbors in a residential to ensure their safety. There's also every year, our Christmas luminaries that line the streets. This is a neighborhood character that once-zoned or rezoned residential office opens the door for other commercial entities to erode that. So, I'm speaking also kind of in collaboration and authorization from our homeowners association head, Ms. Garrett. I really have deep concerns about when we increase our height of 75, that's what it is currently, 75 feet, to 150 feet, that's a significant change. The density changes. All of this erodes our neighborhood that I really think we've got a great neighborhood going on. So, if you could also show the last one at number three. Again, I just want to speak to, you know, the neighbors. We've collected some information, and they, a lot of folks wanted to be here, couldn't be here, some for various reasons, health concerns, or they have to work. But when we talk about this neighborhood, that all of these X's represent, on both of these, 140 people consisting of about 75 neighborhoods who have signed our petition opposing wholeheartedly this rezoning, you know, we're continuing to collect this information, collect some of this input and signatures, and so, we will continue to do that. collect some of this input and signatures, and so we will continue to do that. But clearly, if there is a hub-and-spoke proposal from the applicant, if you could show the third, the last. That is an open area, already-zoned commercial that you can clearly see access to the highway, it's already-zoned commercial behind Cross Country Plaza and all of that, that would not be quite the severe encumbrance to our neighborhood, encumbering our views of real trees, real pines, real oaks that truly in our area are not, you know, 150 feet. So I urge you again, take a look at Cell Mapper, that can give you an idea of what the coverage is. Again, we have T-Mobile, have not had, I can't think of the last time I had a drop call. So I urge you, thank you very much for your time, but I urge you to vote no for the rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Donald Kraft. I live at 3 Lindsay Court. I received the notice about this meeting because my house is in that 350-foot circle. I would see that cell tower, and today is the first time we saw any rendition of how it might look. But again, that tower is going to be so high above anything else. And like my neighbors, I don't understand why they elected years ago to sign a contract to put a cell tower in a residential area when there was commercial areas around there that would not have required to put a cell tower in a residential area. I personally have Verizon. I don't have any drop calls. I didn't have it during, when my grandchild was at my house studying for school. And I don't understand this, and I understand the growth of it, and unlike some people, I remember when I had a landline, and I was not opposed to it. So to say that I would be opposed to a landline if that was something new, I think is also a misrepresentation of our neighborhood. So again, I wish that council would again vote no on this and let them spend the million dollars in a commercial area. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hello, I'm Mike Taylor. I live at Cromwell Drive. My father moved into that neighborhood in 1960, and that was before you had Hardaway High School, Richards Junior High School, the Interstate and even Columbus College. And I've seen the neighborhood change, and it's gotten better, it's gotten progressive. Well, there was overcrowding in schools in 1960 when I was in kindergarten at Clubview Elementary, and the seventh and eighth grade was in Clubview Elementary. You may remember that, Mr. House. So we had kindergarten at the Shrine Club, but it wasn't the Shrine Club then. Now, I have no problems with my phone, and anybody that lives around here has no problems with their cellphones, none whatsoever. And it's like they said, you got cellphones everywhere, towers everywhere. So I urge you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Debbie Mayhew, and I reside at 3401 Hilton Woods Drive. I'm against this rezoning for all of the reasons that I listed in the email that I sent to you, but one of the main things that I saw today, when a picture was actually shown by the people making the zoning request, was that the tower is not aesthetically pleasing at all. They're trying to double in size what is already known and around in our area, the two cell towers that Counselor Crabbe had listed for us. I live within probably half a mile of one of those towers. One idea would be to move where they want to put this tower, as suggested by my neighbors several times. Macon Road has a plethora of already-zoned residential, I mean, non-residential area that could absolutely take on this cellphone tower. Attorney Poytisheff talked about living at Hilton Avenue and Everett Drive. He doesn't travel Edgewood Road, but if he's concerned about being able to have his cell service, Macon Road is closer to his house than Edgewood over to Hilton. South Dixon Drive, they tried to do rezoning on that, South Dixon Drive and Macon Road several years ago, that would be even closer for him. That's a green lot, it has grass on it. Where they are proposing to put this cell tower is an asphalt parking lot, an asphalt parking lot that will still show a silver tower up to 16 feet out of the 150 feet in the sky. As you drive by, as you walk in the neighborhood, as you've heard from our residents, as you're seeing the children that walk, and there are plenty of them, to and from the three schools that are in that area, they're still going to be looking at a cell tower in a parking lot. It is not aesthetically pleasing. I chose to live in that neighborhood 17 years ago. I used to live on the north side of town. As a matter of fact, I voted for Counselor Davis in his very first election. But I became a mother. I'm a mother of three children, and I chose to live where I live because of the beauty of the trees, the sidewalk neighborhoods, the church that I go to that's in the area, the college that my child could walk to if he chose to, the little league that he got to play at, where he's now just committed to go to college and play ball. That neighborhood means everything to us. It is our family home, and it is where we would like to keep it aesthetically beautiful, along with the other reasons that I mentioned earlier. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayhew.
Good morning. My name's Larry Wisnig, and I think everybody has already heard from me before, but I want clarification. The CEO mentioned earlier about the parking lot, and then the young lady just mentioned about the parking lot, but the original contract in 2014 was no parking lot. Seven months later, an internal communications from his company was wanting to take away our sidewalk, and in that internal communication, it says, "We have to go back and get a vote for this." That never happened. So nothing has ever been talked about a parking lot, and the rezoning is going to take away from the value. And then the other thing is, the people who ultimately own this property, according to our bylaws, they never got the written permission for this to happen. And it's right in the bylaws, and our new attorney has all this stuff. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilors. Nice to see you all today. My name is Cynthia Elliott. I live at 2816 East Lindsay Drive in Columbus. I live two doors away from the Shrine Club, so I'm definitely within the circle. I'll say that I don't have the drop calls, and, you know, I have plenty of reception there at my home, and I'm able to get to 911 very easily. I hear a Rex and that very bad curve there on I-85, 185, all the time. And so I do use my phone and I have no trouble. I've used Verizon in the past. Right now I have T-Mobile, and I'm not having drop calls, thank goodness. But what I wanted to say, that it is a privilege to speak to y'all today, and I just wanted to just say that this is something that's near and dear to my heart because it is my home and my neighborhood where I have lived since 1963. I'm here representing, though, not only myself, but other people of the neighborhood. These are just people of the neighborhood, the area. I have 120-some, there we go, copies for everybody, signatures and form our petition, which is opposing the cellphone tower and the rezoning, most definitely the rezoning. We have more than that because of other people in our neighborhood who have gone out, and I don't have those on my list, on those, but they do. So we have, you know, of course, tried our best to, you know, canvass the area and find out what the people feel like, and it's definitely in opposition. Some of them were not here today, especially my neighbor next door, who was right next to the Shrine Club. Her husband just got back from a hospital stay, he's on oxygen. They're worried about the cellphone tower or the rezoning of the Shrine Club as to what may be in the future, and that's the consensus of a lot of people, because we do want it to remain residential in nature. We have homes, you know, we've had families, we've got lives that have all been, you know, there since we moved there. The Shrine Club's been there, it was not the Shrine Club at that time, but it had a swimming pool at that time, and I grew up at that pool. It was an amenity for our neighborhood. It's still a nice place. They've put a beautiful statue in the front. They're very quiet, I don't have any trouble with them. They don't, they're not rebel rousers, you know, and so we have accepted them. We love that they help the crippled children, and so we have accepted them. To say that if they ever were to move, though, what would happen? We don't know. And that's the question we worry about. If it's rezoned to residential office, we don't know what might become of it. You can say it can be a lodge or, you know, some sort of a club, but who, you know, not all clubs and lodges are the same, just like those grocery stores y'all were talking about earlier with the lottery in them. You know, not all little grocery stores are the same, and I've seen those that y'all were talking about, and they do look a little sketchy, and you worry about, I would not go in one of those. My daughter asked me the other day, she said, "I want a Macon Road." She said, "Would you go in there and shop, Mama?" No, I would not go in there and shop. And so, just like that, the Shrine Club, you know, if it ever were to sell, we don't know what would be there, and residential office can be many things. Let's see, I just wanted to say, let's see. Also, of course, we're worried about our property values. That's one of the main things that they're concerned about, our neighbors are concerned about, as well as the RF waves, those radio frequency waves, which, you know, there are, you know, many things that they say they can cause from migraines to cancer, and you just don't know exactly, and that's the question. We have children and grandchildren, and if the property was changed as far as more traffic coming in or out, we have children that are walking to school and back and forth. When we moved there, the, you know, when I was a little girl, it was even more grassy and more trees over there on the creek, and it kind of gave you the sense of, you know, you're in the city but in the country, and so it was really nice. And so that's why we like to keep it as, you know, residential, that's what we want. The cell tower, like most everybody has said already, it's going to be 150-foot of steel, even if it does have green needles on top of it, and, you know, it's so, it's just going to be so big. And I just wish that you would just prayerfully consider everything that everyone has said today, because I don't think that other people would want that in their area or in their neighborhood, because it is a neighborhood. And it's, you know, we have two, three schools. I went to Richards, Clubview and Hardaway, and then I went to Columbus State, which was Columbus College right then. And so, you know, it's just a great place to live and to grow up, and we just don't want it to change. So we appreciate, you know, everything that y'all can do, and just prayerfully consider y'all our message. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, sir.
My name's Ed Mullis. I live at 3310 Gale Drive, two houses away from the Shrine Club. I could literally hit the Shrine Club with a rock from my yard. I wouldn't do that because their Shriners are great people. All the neighbors, we're all against rezoning from residential to residential office. She's got, Cindy got over 100 signatures, but all she did was just go around the neighborhood, just ride around the Shrine Club. You know, we can get thousands or more signatures against this if it's needed. Today's the first time we've heard about them making it look like a tree. They were, Mr. Throckmorton was asked three years ago about making it look like a tree, and he said that the tower would be so tall, it would stick out like a sore thumb, looking like a tree. This is a 150-foot tower. I don't think there's another one in Columbus that's 150-foot tall, and I don't think there's another one that's stuck right into a residential neighborhood either. They were asked three years ago about it being so tall, would they have to put a light on top of it for an airport? And they said they probably would, you'd probably have to have a light, a flashing light on top. If you're going to make a tree by a flashing light, you might as well put, decorate it with balls and lights and make it look like a Christmas tree. There's a, they talk about they're going to lease it out to all these other companies to put all their equipment on top of this tower. They're going to also probably, other companies will probably have to mount emergency generators around the base of the tree for when the power goes out, where they keep their power. So not only are you going to have a tree, you're going to have generators there. Y'all know what that tree looks like on River Road, and it's not in a residential neighborhood, but it has gone to heck the way it looks. Nobody keeps up with that thing. If you set a precedent to let these people put a tower in a neighborhood, in the future it could be your neighborhood. You know, you might not be on council no more, but if you set a precedent letting them come into our neighborhood, it could go anywhere. One other thing I thought about, you know, this bad tornado up in Kentucky. Edgewood had a horrible tornado back in the 1950s. It took the roof off the Edgewood Elementary School and everything else, and this tower is going to be decorated with so many pieces of equipment when they start leasing it out to all these other companies, that all these pieces of equipment could become missiles in a tornado. Anyway, that's about all I got to say. I'm not a public speaker. It takes everything for me to come up here and talk to y'all. But y'all, please, please protect our neighborhood. We don't want to rezon, we want to keep residential. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
I reside at 2854 Cromwell. I saw on the slides before that my house was not represented with a red X, however, please amend. And I'm also known as Saint Nick of Columbus, so at this time of the year...
Yeah, I was going to have, I was going to have him check that residence you just made.
I hope I'm not going to be facing any elf prejudice, being jolly and old. And I haven't heard anyone speak of the ramifications of flying reindeer, we'll let that go. But I'm also pastor of Hilton Terrace Baptist Church, which is in the area, just about a mile away. It's a small church. All of us together could not form a voting block that would affect you at all. However, and pastors come and pastors go, I've only lived in Columbus for 13 years. My children went to Clubview and Richards and CSU and Columbus High. So in only 13 years, we've become well-grounded in the So, in only 13 years, we've become well-grounded in the area and I haven't spoken to a single person that would like to see this change at this time, in this location. And I say that because in the future, we may be all for it. But, right now, as a pastor, if I had so many people coming up to me after a business meeting or during a business meeting, and I'm sure all of you have been to some church business meetings in the past, I would definitely think again before passing something that so many people in the area seem to be against. I speak to my neighbors. Hilton Terrace Baptist Church is aligned with the local schools, Hardaway, Richards, Clubview. I speak to the parents, not always dressed like this. But, in the years that we've been talking about this, and I, I have not been elected to be a spokesperson, I'm really just speaking on my own personal experience. But, in the years that we've been talking about this, I haven't heard a single person who lived in the area that wanted it. Lots of people who live outside of the area do want it and are looking towards the future. But, certainly, cannot we weave a future that will include this neighborhood to preserve it? I've heard so many people talk about Christmas and Halloween and children. This is a neighborhood. This is not some forgotten place. And there's plenty of forgotten places around Columbus that you could probably put this large pine tree in the midst of all the oaks and nobody would complain. However, I have to admit, the suggestion of it looking like a Christmas tree does strike me somewhat. Nevertheless, I would just have to give my negative opinion to changing the law. Why do we have to change? I didn't even realize that a few blocks down, it would be illegal. They could move ahead, they could have moved ahead already. Why this place at this time? That's my only question. So, as a resident of the area and as nothing else, I can't support this and I hope that you do not either. Be good. Christmas is right around the corner.
Thank you. And Santa, by the way, this year, we really do want peace on earth, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay. If there, if there are no other hands, Mayor, we will bring this back, the underlying zoning for a vote that second Tuesday in January at nine o'clock. Appreciate everybody being here.
Okay.
All right, that concludes that public hearing. Mayor, the next item we've got up is to allow the Columbus Aquatics Commission, the San Ordinance, to meet quarterly instead of bi-monthly, just on first reading, but that request has been made. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Councilor Huff?
Yeah, I'd like to get Director Holly Browder to come forward, please.
I'll let Director Browder explain it, but I think it's basically to make it possible to have.
Councilor, just hold on just a second, allow them to exit. I think that's good.
Good, okay. Yeah, I'm going to let, I'm going to let the director explain it, but I think this is just to make it where meetings will flow better and have better attendance.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council and Mr. City Manager. Yes, that is correct. We've had difficulties in having a quorum at our meetings. Initially, when the commission was established, it was that we would meet, we, monthly, so we did that for quite some time, struggled then as well. And of course, we've let them pick the, the day, the time for the meeting. Then, we moved to bi-monthly, trying to assist, to make sure we could have a greater number of turnout. We were still not successful and so, they have asked if we could consider that as an option for them, just to be able to accommodate and hopefully have a quorum. Oftentimes, we have as many staff there as we do voting members and so, we've just not been able to have enough meetings where they could vote and approve their minutes. So, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Good.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Browder. Any other comments or questions?
Doesn't appear to be any.
Okay, we'll vote on that at the next meeting in January, Mayor. And the last business item we have is to recognize and honor a four-legged friend of Columbus, the K-9 Mimi handled by former CPD Corporal David Rogers, and that is ready for action.
Move, pro. All right, there's a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to read that in recognition, the Mayor Pro Tim is going to read that in recognition of K-9 Mimi. No, I don't think so.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution reads as follows. Whereas K-9 Mimi, a German Shepherd dog, a German Shepherd drug detection dog with the Columbus Police Department recently retired at the age of five years. Whereas Corporal David Rogers has faithfully served the Columbus Police Department from November 9th, 2009 until November 28th, 2021. Whereas Corporal David Rogers and K-9 Mimi spent two weeks together at Southern Coast K-9 for narcotic training and were certified March 30th, 2018 and began working as a team. Whereas Corporal Rogers and K-9 Mimi spent three weeks in further training at Custom K-9 Unlimited for obedience, evidence, recovery and tracking, receiving certification on October 21st, 2019. Whereas K-9 Mimi recovered two firearms that were discarded and hidden after a shooting in 2020. Whereas K-9 Mimi was involved in the seizure of 49 ounces of cocaine, 13 and a half ounces of heroin, 1,827 and a half ounces of marijuana and 269 ounces of meth and the seizure of $424,000 in US currency during the course of her career. Whereas Columbus Police Corporal David Rogers handled K-9 Mimi for her entire Columbus Police Department career and desires to undertake the care and ownership of Mimi during her retirement. Whereas K-9 Mimi, whereas K-9 Mimi's accomplishments and those of Corporal David Rogers deserve special recognition by this council. Now, therefore, our council does hereby resolve, this council expresses its deep appreciation to handler, former Columbus Police Corporal David Rogers and K-9 Mimi for their service and dedication to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and authorizes the transfer of Mimi to the ownership of David Rogers. I move adoption. Oh, we already done that, nevermind.
It's already been adopted, but we congratulate the handler and, and thank K-9 Mimi for her service to the police department and the sheriff's department. All right?
All right, that's all we had listed, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we had one individual listed on the public agenda who had called to cancel, so we'll move to the city managers. Hang on, we've got Councilor Woodson.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I would like to point a privilege, if you will please allow me to. Just want to say to, who, this is hard. Just want to say thank you to all my colleagues, to all my colleagues, to God, my family and the citizens of District 7, for the opportunity to serve them for seven terms. With the loss of my mom, being sick for four and a half months, my daughter moving to Colorado, my son in Germany and going now to Texas, I had to reevaluate my life and some health conditions that I'm experiencing that I like to keep personal because I'm a very private person. Many of y'all knows through some struggles, I wouldn't tell you how to figure it out on your own. So, I have seriously thought about it and it's hard for me to say, but an exciting moment because it will give me an opportunity to share with my children and my family and give me the opportunity to travel and take care of some of the concerns that I'm having. So, publicly announcing to y'all today that I will not be seeking reelection for my seat. I didn't want to do it in a public setting because you guys are my family. We've been through thick and thin together and I owe you that respect and I didn't want it to make it like a show thing, you know, with the media. I just wanted to make it within family for you to know. It's scary because I've been here for 28 years. I love what I do, but when I started it, I started faith-based and the Bible says seven is completion and this is my seventh term. And I believe that God has something for me and you to do. Now, that doesn't mean I'm not going to be involved because I'll probably be up in front of that podium. I know I've been nagging, Council still, about South Limpkin Road. I want to be on some boards and I want to be involved. I just feel I need that flexibility to be able to spend time with my family. Most of y'all know how special my mom was. I feel very lost without her and I need to, to get closer to family and friends. And running away by working all the time is not helping. But, I'm very honored and very grateful to have been with all of y'all at the end of this next year, 22, 28 years. It's been very exciting, very learning and I'm very honored to have shared and worked with each and every one of you. I said I wasn't going to cry, but y'all know I'm a baby. I'm emotional. So, to all of you, thank you. I know there'll be another opportunity. Isaiah, Lisa, you guys mean the world to me. Lindsay, Sandra, we've been through a lot together. I love you all, but I think it's time for me to go into a new journey and I hope that you will pray for me that this is the right decision. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. To my seatmate of 28 years, to my collaborator, my sounding board and my, what I affectionately call my city council wife. Oh, I want to say thank you for all the, the years that you've listened to me and, and we've bounced things off one another. I really appreciate your friendship and we've had other conversations about grandchildren and dogs and everything else, so. When you started on council, I think we butted heads a little bit, just like, we but, I butted heads with Evelyn, Council, former Mayor Pro Tim, Evelyn Few. And now that I reflect, I think it was my hard-headedness, not yours or Evelyn's, but I want you to know you'll be missed and cherish the time that you've been here and the, the time that I've had to work together with you in a professional setting, knowing that your passion and care for the public and the citizens and especially the children and not to mention the city employees, both public safety and general government. I, I know the passion of your heart and you will definitely be missed and I hope and pray that the person that sits in that seat next will carry that same forward for our citizens.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Councilor?
Oh, by the way, someone, I told a friend I was going to do this, they didn't believe me. And the first thing they said to me, "Why? Because you have opposition?" And I started laughing. I said, "I've always had opposition." I remember one time someone said to me, "You'll always have opposition because we want you to always be right and straight." So, I'm not afraid of competition, it's just I think it's time.
Councilor Huff?
Councilor Woodson, thank you for your service. Councilor Woodson, I met years and years ago, probably, I can't remember if it was Sanford Bishop fundraiser for State House or whatever, but we met way back then. She met my wife before we got married and we go back a ways. I was just a community servant, just bobbing in and out, helping out wherever I could and volunteering all over town. But, since I've been here, you and I have had a lot of conversation about a lot of things and you've given me a lot of guidance. And I know since 2014, you've been trying to let it settle in whether you wanted to stay or leave. So, you kept coming back, the competition came, you kept coming back and you say, "Well, I think I need to do this one more time." So, yeah, I was listening, waiting for you to change your mind again. Yeah, but thank you so much. I appreciate you. You know, we've had a lot of private conversations and like I told you, coming in the door, there were a lot of things that you and the Mayor Pro Tim pushed me around about and told me, "Slow it down, you know, get, get, get some help, get some help. You have some good ideas, but take your time." So, I appreciate you for helping with that. But, anyway, thank you for all the work you've done. Your people that you introduced me to and from Lefty on, you got a chance to talk to them and they kind of bridged the gap between your district and my district on the Latin community, African-American community and others, going on down the line, white community, everybody. They helped me to bridge the gap on the things that we had in common between the districts that we could work, work well together on. So, I'm here, Sharonda's here, whatever you need. Yeah, yeah, congratulations and we look forward to working well with you for another year. Thank you.
Councilor Huff?
Councilor Woodson, just want to thank you for your long and dedicated and faithful service to this community. Without a doubt, you've been a strong voice and a strong counselor to all the rest of us about the people in, in your district. We fully expect to see you out there and talking to us about whatever it is that we need to know about. So, I expect to hear from you whenever it is you're out there. But, thank you very much for all that you've done for all of us and we will miss you. You're leaving big shoes to fill. So, go out there and enjoy life a little bit more as long as you periodically show up here to keep us all straight. Thank you.
Councilor Tucker?
I'm not going to get emotional. He's like, "Yeah, right." We started our bond with Evelyn and I'm extremely thankful for all that you have done. Sitting next to me and pinching me. But, not only that, you really accepted me for who I am. You have given me so much, you know, sound advice and wisdom and allowed me to, to even shadow you and to introduce me to people in reference to GMA and ACCG and NLC and NACO and you're telling me things that you faced when you first got on council and how you felt like I was taking on that spirit of Mimi, this little Mimi. And I appreciate that because as a newly-elected official, you know, a lot of people think that you're going to get on here and, you know, "I'm going to make all these people do what I want them to do." It's not going to work that way. And you just took the time and I honestly, not only are you my sister in arms, but you are really my big sister. And, and you know, me and Chris and Megan, we love you.
I love you too.
And we're going to still be together and do some things, the same thing that we was doing with Evelyn, my plan is the same thing I'm going to do with my big sister Evelyn Mimi Woodson. So, thank you.
I love you too.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Barnes?
One of the few things that I've learned to do as far as computers is Facebook. So, I've noticed on Facebook with you with your family and whatever. And one of the times that I was looking at, I, it brought me back, not to bring up any tears, but what a good daughter you were because you and I went through some, had many a talk, many a meeting. As a healthcare professional, I knew, I gave you a preview, what to look forward As a healthcare professional, I knew, I gave you a preview, what to look forward to, just to prepare you. A lot of times you don't want to hear things, but I know that you grabbed that information and it helped to sustain you through that very, very, very difficult, difficult time. And you know, you can tell the character of a person by the way they treat their mother and all that they've gone through. And you and I have had conversations, I know the many difficult times that you've had that you talked to me about. And you, as Counselor House, it says, you might be an even counselor, but you're always going to be involved community-wise. And you know, it says in Scripture, "There's a time and a place." And I know that at that time, I saw you struggling, but you made it to council, it was a very difficult time, and I commend you for that because I know there's nothing as close to you as your mother can be. And so, you will be missed. You've always, always spoken your opinion, always said I might be the only one doing this here, and I respect you for having the hoops up to be able to have that about you and speak your mind, always having the constituents at heart. And so, you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Thomas?
One of the things I'm thinking is that by you telling us this today, this will give us some time to get accustomed to this. Your term is not officially up until this time next year. And so, I expect you to continue in the way you have continued, including every time she sees me, she says, "Hello, beautiful. What more can you want?" So, Counselor Woodson, you've left some big shoes to be filled. And whoever follows you in that seat is going to have to really put forth an effort for our community and particularly for our employees. When I think of the kinds of things that you do, that's what comes to mind, is how you look out for our employees. And I want to thank you for that, and you're still on my speed dial, and you will be even when you go out of office. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. Love you too.
Counselor Garrett?
Counselor Woodson, I just want to say, it's been an honor to serve with you. I really respect, you know, the decisions that you've made and even the hard ones like this, because I know you love service. I know you love our community. I know this is hard for you, and I know you don't take this decision lightly, but I know you're going to be out there helping us on the front lines. Now, you're going to be like citywide, though. So, it'll, I look forward to working with you for the next year and really making this a productive year, and then working with you on the civil side afterwards. But good luck with everything and know that you are in our prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll keep mine very brief. You've always amazed me. You're one of the strongest people I've ever met. You've kept a lot of balls in the air, all by yourself at the same time. Your constituents always got you best, and that's not something everybody can say with ease. I am grateful for your counsel. I'm grateful for the times we didn't agree because it helped me see another point of view, and I'm grateful for your friendship more than anything. And I know that will not dissipate as you move into your next adventure. I'm actually torn, we hate to see you leave, but I'm very excited for you, for what the next chapter brings. And I got to tell you, you've been a trailblazer, too, as a woman, as a proud member of the Latina community. I'm excited about what the Tri-City Latino Festival is going to become now that you can devote even more to, it's hard to believe, but even more time to it. So, just on behalf of your constituents, just thank you for a job well done, faithful servant. Good job. All right, Counsel Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Mimi, I don't think I can duplicate the same words that everybody else has spoken today, but I don't think you're going anywhere anytime soon. But I just want to echo the same sentiments around the table. I agree wholly and fully, and we understand the situation today, but you're still here. And I just thank you for all your contributions to the community.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I love you guys very much. It was a hard decision to make, but I just feel in my heart that this is the right time and this is the right decision. Am I afraid? Yeah, 28 years is a long time, but I just feel it's just time, that's it. And we'll see what the Lord has planned for me because I know he does have something planned. I love this community. My children, they keep telling me, "Well, why don't you move with us? Why are you there by yourself?" I can't leave Columbus. Columbus is my home, and I planted my roots here over 30 years ago. And in the military, I came and go, came and go. So, Columbus is where I want to be till the day God calls me. And I will continue to work, just in a different capacity. I just want to continue our friendship and pray for me because I don't know what's waiting, but something's waiting, and I'm ready to go for it. Thank you. Sorry for all the emotion, but y'all know me. I'm a wreck anyway. So, love you all, I very respect all of you. Y'all been wonderful, and my constituents been amazing. Can't please everybody, but at least 60% of them love me. And I know that each time for each election. And for the citizens of Columbus, thank you for allowing me to impact your life also for the past 27 years. Like Judy said, I got one more to go, so a lot of fighting to come. Right, Clifton? I know Clifton'd be happy to see me go, "Oh, my God, here she comes again." But it's been a great honor. And Sandra, we've been together a long time. I know you'd never believed me, but the day has come, and thank you. And Lindsay, thank you from the bottom of my heart. When Sandra's left us, you took the boat and you kept going. And Isaiah, I can't say enough right now, you're like a brother to me beyond that. We have, we've had our moments, but we've always respected each other, and we always, at the end of the day, we accomplished what we needed to accomplish. And that means the world to me, and I know I can call you at any time, and I know you're there. And Lisa, you're like my sister hitting back there. I appreciate you too, all the help that you've given me with the festival, and it will get bigger, knowing Rob. Rob has some new ideas. And Tanisha, thank you for letting me call you at all hours of the night and time. I appreciate it. There's so many people to thank, but God knows in my heart, and you guys know in your heart, how much I appreciate everything y'all have done for me, and thank you. Let's continue business before I become a nervous wreck.
City Attorney?
You know, I got to say something, Counselor Woodson. I remember maybe your earliest campaign, I think a lawyer was challenging you, and that particular lawyer was a frequent litigator with the city and against the city. But I'll say that you trounced him, for the record, and 99.9% of the lawyers in town were very happy that you were successful. But it's been a pleasure to work with you and our assistants, of course, Jamie Deloche, Lucy Scheftall, you know. It's always been a pleasure to work with you, and you have made everybody around here think outside of the box. So, we appreciate your service and look forward to finishing up the next year with you, and Merry Christmas and Feliz Navidad.
Oh, Feliz Navidad, you too. Thank you.
All right, everybody put your tissues away. Back to work for a little bit. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, before I get to my agenda, just a couple of things say. Congratulations to Counselor Woodson on her pending retirement. Want to thank you for your many years of service and the impact that you've had on the district that you serve. And I've said to you many times, when we calculate the total investments across our city, there is no single council district with the investments that you've witnessed and been a part of in your district. And I do recall that, and thank you for being a friend during those years, but I recall when you announced several elections ago that you were not going to run for reelection, and it got down to the week of qualifying, and people came out of nowhere, elected officials and others, and twisted your arm to get you to qualify. And I think it was a week of qualifying when you had told them, "I am not running." And, but they twisted your arm and somehow got you to say, "Yes, you would go ahead and do it." You said, "This time." But it's always good when that comes from the people, you know. You wanted to retire, walk away, the people said, "No, we're not ready for you to do that." So, congratulations. Thank you for your years of service. And Mayor and Council, this is the last meeting before Christmas and before the New Year. And, you know, whether it dawned on you or not, during the public hearing, you actually had St. Nick at the microphone. And I asked him for his card, and it says, "St. Nick." And on the back, it's Pastor John Burnett. And so, I asked him if he would just stick around for a minute, and they're going to wait on him downstairs, but I wanted him to come to the microphone and put his hat on, and I wanted him to greet you, the citizens, on behalf of CCGTV, and maybe say Merry Christmas in his own special way. And then they'll pull it from this opportunity here, and you'll see it run on CCGTV during the holiday season. So, if you would put your hat on and, I see you've got a cane and...
I do.
He's got the works.
Miracle on 34. He's been a Nick's businessman a little.
Yes.
I have a different uniform for him.
And so, you're being blessed today, and so, the mic is yours in your own way.
Well, thank you so much for inviting me to come and say a few words, and let the first words be Merry Christmas to everyone and a Happy New Year. On behalf of all of those who depend upon our local city council and all of those who are watching CCGTV, many people have asked, "St. Nicholas, how do I get on the nice list?" And here's what I always have to say. Number one, think of others before you think of yourself. And number two, treat others the way you want to be treated, not my words, but the words of someone so much wiser and greater than me. So, wherever you are, Feliz Navidad, Merry Christmas, and a happy and blessed New Year. Thank you, sir. Selfies for everyone.
I have the card.
I have left the card. I'm actually going to be picking up some of the cards that children have left for Parks and Recreation. And they're going to take some pictures and send a picture of St. Nick answering their mail to every single one. I hope this becomes, this is the first year for this, but I hope it becomes a tradition we can look forward to for many years to come. And as always, as a citizen of Columbus, I'm not just Santa John or Santa Rick or Santa something. I'm St. Nick of Columbus. I'm here for all of you. Thank you.
And so, thank you, St. Nick. And Tiaja Johnson is going to escort you down to the Christmas tree, and we hope you will bless us at that location as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I just couldn't pass up that opportunity there.
Actually, it's card, I'm moving now.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have an agenda, and we'll try and move rapidly through this agenda. First on my agenda, and we've got some guests here, is Midland Commons Tax Allocation District Fund Grant, JMC Flat Rock Partners LLC. Recall that we came to you in August of 2021, and you authorized the city manager's office to enter into negotiations, negotiations with JMC Flat Rock Partners LLC. And our staff did exactly that and concluded those negotiations with an agreement that defines the number of payments, the timing of payments, and overall length of time the agreement will be enforced. The agreement also establishes a city administrative fee of $5,000 per year to be paid out of the Midland Columbus Tax Allocation Fund and before any other payments are made. And so, you authorized us to go into negotiations. We've negotiated, and we are bringing back the terms of the negotiation to you for your approval. And the payout of $14.5 million will begin with an initial payment of $60,737.60.
Motion to approve, Counselor Barnes, and a second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? All right, you want to cue it? Please register your votes, Counselor.
And so, Mayor, as you do that, I will go on to further say that we, for the record to be clear, if for any reason the Midland Commons TAD funds are inadequate to make the scheduled payments for this and all Midland Commons TAD projects approved by the council, then each project will receive its proportional share based on the amount for its scheduled payment due that year. So, we just want to be clear, if we don't have it, we don't pay it. And so, it's not putting council or the citizens in any awkward position. And so, that is should a shortfall occur, and we wanted to be clear about that. And we do have some representatives here, and, you know, I will conclude by saying that the agreement terminates, at the end of 20 years, the agreement terminates, and the developer is entitled, no longer entitled to further agreement from the TAD funds or the city regardless of whether the total payments of $14.5 million has been reached. So, the staff has negotiated, and this negotiation results in an agreement that looks out for this city, for the CCG, you, and the citizens of Columbus, and so, that's what you've just approved. And I don't know if anyone wants to speak, you don't have to, but we wanted to make sure it was clear that this is the result of the negotiated term or agreement. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, everybody. How are y'all today? I just wanted to say thank you. I've met with each and every one of y'all individually on this, and this has been a long process. We've started working with Rick, Pam, and Will, and have graduated up and walked through what our plan was with each and every one of you, and we have never been met with any resistance. We may not have been able to do everything the way that we wanted them to, but y'all showed us a different way, and I think we all balanced out and made this project happen. And we'll look forward to having the grocery store open next year and the Lifestyle Center open next year, and have each and every one of y'all out there to enjoy what y'all have helped build, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blain.
Thank you, sir. So, next on my agenda, Mayor and Council, I've got Housing Authority of Columbus, request for environmental review approval. It's for a $2.5 million...
Motion approved from Counselor Woodson, and a second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? Bruce, please cue it. Oh, Bruce, I didn't have it up there.
And while you're doing that, Mayor, this is for a $2.5 million HUD funding that will be released...
Did you vote when you voted?
Yeah. Yeah, you did. You voted before I started talking, yes. Yeah. But this is $2.5 million HUD funding that will be released for more than... that will be released for mortization of Elizabeth Kennedy and Warren Williams River Homes for the Housing Authority.
Okay, Counselor Tucker, did you have? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, she does want it to be recorded as any affirmative on the first item on statement.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, there's also a motion to approve items three and four on the City Manager's Agenda from Counselor Davis, second by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion from either one of those items? All right. Can you cue that, Bruce, or do we need to do a voice vote? Let's just do them together as a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, those are approved. If you'd walk through those, please, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Number three is a 2020-2021 additional vocal grant, which is Violence Against Women Act is what that is. And it's a $50,000 grant and $16,667 case match or as otherwise awarded. And then number four is the U.S. Department of Justice Grant for the Muscogee County Jail. It's $250,000 for jail improvements with $125,000 in kind match requirement. Then I've got purchases. Mayor, I've got.
Motion to approve A through E from Counselor House. And there's a second from, I think, Counselor Crabbe. Is that who I heard? All right, Counselor Huff. Anybody want any one of those pulled for discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say. We can register. All right, interview both. You're fooling me every time, Bruce. We got everybody that.
Okay, so.
I think we're missing a few. There we go. That's got it.
Okay. So, Mayor, the contract extension for MA Telephone System Muscogee County Prison is, was A. B, Records Management System Database Modification Services for the Sheriff's Office. It's $177,744 for modification required for the Records Management System. C is a contract extension for Uniform Services. And this is a short contract extension until we can complete the RFP process. And then number D is annual subscription for fee for Sheriff's Office online training, $31,719. And E would be gray key forensic software license for mobile devices for the Columbus Police Department. It's $27,924.48. Those are the purchases. And I've just got a couple of updates. And they are very short unless you have questions.
Okay.
The first one is, and both are by Deputy City Manager Goodwin. One is on evictions. And the other is animal care and control contract update. Deputy City Manager Goodwin.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yes, very brief. Just to give you an update of where we are on the eviction process, we are moving very swiftly on this. As you recall, the committee has met. We've met a few times. I had a number of landlords, property owners there and others at that meeting. The landlords selected, as you recall, the option three, which give them the opportunity to come up with a proposal in lieu of what the city was proposing in option two. Again, we've met October the 18th, November the 9th, and December the 9th. And we are looking to come back to you on January the 11th with the first reading of a new ordinance that would have certain stipulations and some of the things that I'm going to share with you here in terms of the meeting highlights, but also a proposed resolution of what we have come up with with, in conjunction with the landlords. These are things that they wanted, things that we think that we can agree on. One is waiving the landfill tipping fees for those who will be taking care of their own debris, taking it to the landfill. We will not charge them. Coming up with three business days for them to remove the debris, either the tenant and/or the landlord. It would be, again, three business days, not three days, but giving them that opportunity because they, of course, share it with us. It's just hard sometimes, particularly on the weekends and those things are last minute, to get someone to come in and haul it away, particularly with things being, they're short too in terms of employees. So we, three days, we're going to allow that. But keeping in mind that on the fourth day, if that material remains out there, then they will be cited. And so our codes and enforcement will come in and cite them. After that fourth day, if the debris is not removed, the city will come in, call our contractor in. We will remove it. And then we will send that invoice to the property owner. And a lien will be placed on that property if it is not paid. The 24-hour issue of removal and abandonment, of course, is something that we have been in discussions with. But of course, the property owner can determine, you know, the abandonment and remove the property as they see fit.
All right, Counselor, there's a couple of questions. Counselor Crabbe?
Yes.
Thank you. On this, the city will contract to have the debris removed and send invoice to the property owners. Is that invoice going to be for $500? Or will the, will that contractor set the price?
Well, you know, the contractor can set the price, but the price that we have certainly come up with was $500. If they feel that they can do it less than that, then, you know, we certainly want the best price.
Well, but they've had their shot.
They've had, yes. They have.
When you say they, are you talking about?
Well, if they didn't get it with the timeframe that we've agreed to, they had their shot to get it, and we send our contractor, then we're going to bill them. And that billing, I have not talked with you about it, but perhaps that if it's $500, if that's what it is. But we are going to add an administrative handling fee because, I mean, it has to be processed. We've got to go after them. We're talking about putting a lien on the property if they don't pay it. That cost.
Still has to be.
Right. I just, I think that we need to be very clear that, okay, we gave them options one and two. And I'm anticipating that the first person who gets billed on the fourth day is going to think that it should be $500. And if it's more than $500. So let's anticipate that. Because there are, I think that there are going to be some set outs that will definitely cost more than $500. I mean, I've had two set outs lately that were over $1,000.
And again, we have not yet decided. We know that what our option was, option two. So we're going to get, once we, of course, get with Lucy, she's going to be preparing that ordinance, we will determine with the assistance of Public Works of what that cost would be. I mean, it would be a minimum, you know, it could be a minimum of $500.
Well, but now I want to be clear when you say determine with Public Works. I don't want Public Works picking this up. I want a private contractor.
But the private contractors work through Public Works.
Okay.
Yes. They'll be working through Public Works. And so that's why I say.
And the reason we initially set the flat rate of 500 is that they're going to have, they're going to win some where they go out and they really could have done it for 300. But then they're going to lose on some where it costs you 1,000, but you get 500 for this one.
Who are you talking about?
The private contractor.
Okay, so you're talking about the vendors now?
Yes. So they're going, you know, the vendor is going to win some like, gosh, that's a, you know, I got $500 and there was just a couch and a washer.
I understand that. But now with the landlords having the first option to clean up, I anticipate that if the landlords have a large cleanup, they're going to just say.
City.
I'll just let the city do it. And because they're thinking that it's going to be $500 for the city to do it. And they'll easily pay $500 instead of what they were quoted. And so I want us to be aware of that and be in front of that.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
I think like a landlord.
I had not thought of that. I had not thought about that.
But I think that's why we say a minimum of 500.
Okay.
A minimum of 500.
I think that's, I think that's.
Great catch.
Do we say a minimum? We didn't say that, though. And, I mean, we're, so we have to.
Counselor Crabbe has been, you know, awesome throughout this process and has really helped us to work through this. And so I really appreciate all that she has done and meant throughout this process.
I'm glad she mentioned that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so. But that's where we are. It's going to be zero tolerance. We've got to clean things up. You know, this is just an area here, Fortson Business Park, that we've just recently had to go and clean up. And of course, this is not per se an eviction. But this is just, this is just trash, debris. That's all throughout our city. And so in many cases, I mean, that's what evictions can look like. You've seen them. I've shown you the photos. And so it, we cannot have this.
But this is not an eviction. And I asked her to put this here because they sent it to me last week and I sent it to the mayor. This is a real situation. Last week, and our people had to go out and spend a couple of days cleaning up this mess where someone dumped it. And when we get to those cameras, you know, and we can catch them.
Absolutely.
We just want the judges in the courts to support us because we're going to go after them. And because this is, we can't have this.
And in a case like in this one in particular, Public Works is already placing a camera at this location. Before we get to the new cameras, they've got, we've got to go ahead and do what we've got to do now. And so.
Counselor, Counselor Woodson had a question.
Yes, I was going to ask the same question, but Crabbe's handling. She did a fantastic job. I watched YouTube how she handled the landlords. It was really, really good. But I want to make sure that on the ordinance, we're going to say minimum plus, oh my God, I just forgot that, administrative fees to be added to it. And looking at this, man, that's like $1,000 or $1,500 to clean that up.
More than that.
But just want to make sure that in the ordinance, it does say be bold, minimum, it could be more. And then to make sure that it says administrative fees.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And in this case, you know, we sent the, the grab ball had to go out, pick up the big stuff. But then we had to have boots on ground to pick up the, you know, the small stuff and kind of just really clean it up. And so that's time and that's labor for us to have to go and do this.
Good job, ladies.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, hearing this conversation, two things come to my mind. First of all, let's be sure that we are really clear on what the charges may be and how much they may be. And secondly, let's be really cognizant of notifying the landlord community. I'm not sure how you do that. But to make sure that they know that this is the new procedure and there will be zero tolerance. And make sure as much as we can to get the word out that this is what we are now doing. But let's be real clear on how much we are charging and who pays and all of those kinds of things. I know you will, but just a reminder.
Sure, thank you.
And we, of course, share it with them when the first reading would take place on January the 11th. And I know you will have plenty here. The landlords will be here to be a part of that discussion on first reading.
Counselor Tucker?
I did have a question in reference to the landfill tipping fees in reference to the resident. Are they able to dump their stuff? Or is it just the landlord?
Yes, no, anyone can dump at the landfills. Anyone. Household garbage is about $42.50 per ton. Construction debris is the same, $42.50 per ton.
So will they, will their tipping fees be waived, the residents? Or is it just the landlord?
No, just the landlords.
Okay. And the reason why is because of this photo right here? And when I was out just Saturday, I'm finding new dumping locations over in District Four that I wasn't even aware of. And honestly, if you did not get out your car, you wouldn't notice because it's like a mound. And they have made a landfill off Congress. So if they, that's the reason why I was asking in reference to those tipping fees because people are telling them to pick the stuff up and go dump it and not dumping it in the actual dump. They're finding locations like this and they're dumping all over the city.
Well, and again, I think the comprehensive camera program is really going to help us. And we are going to get them, you know? And, you know, and when we get the camera system, we, I want to play what they play on cops. Bad boys, bad boys, what you going to do? What you going to do when we come for you? We're coming to get them. And so I just assure you, we will get them.
And the last thing, you know, that we know that we may have to consider right now. Our, I'm sorry.
Let me get a question.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Crabbe?
One, a couple other things. We discussed landfill hours on the weekends. Is that going to be, is that what you're about to address? Okay. And then, so before you address that, let me ask you one thing. On this wave of the landfill tipping fees, you're going to put that it's, that that is waived during those three business days? That's going to be specified, correct?
That's exactly correct.
Okay. And then you can answer about my landfill hour.
On the landfill, what I was going to mention is, right now, of course, we just opened the landfill on Saturday. It's just the first Saturday of the month. Of course, we had it open previously with all of the issues in terms of the waste, issues that we're having. But right now, it's once a month that it's open, the first Saturday of the month. What we're looking to do, because we know that we've got to get Saturday in there and because of the shortage, it's very hard for us to do that right now every Saturday. So we're looking at perhaps, instead of Monday through Friday and then that first Saturday, we may then have to open it Tuesday through Saturday. That way, we know it's open, you know, every Saturday. And then on Mondays, perhaps, we don't open. So I'm working and talking with Director Short right now on that.
I understand about the hours and everything. But I think that Mondays are going to be a big, a big day for people to bring because people that have been working over the weekend, then they're going to want to come in on Monday. So, I mean, maybe give them Friday.
Or Wednesday.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Or something like it. I would say Monday would probably be a big tipping day.
Okay, all right. We can look at that, but definitely one day out of the week we'll close and then open up on the Saturday.
So Saturdays, but Sundays will be closed?
Sundays will be closed.
Okay. And we'll be, we'd be open all day on Saturday?
Well, we'll determine the hours and then we'll make sure.
Because definitely, they had mentioned definitely in the afternoon hours because that gives them time to collect the stuff in the morning and then drop off in the afternoons.
Definitely take that into consideration.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, and are you, what is your final subject?
Yes. And the final subject, yes, is the animal care and control contract. Since we get that. You have documentation there before you. If you recall, of course, on November the 9th was first reading, you approved the initial contract. We were going to go back, continue the negotiations and come back to you with the details of the contract for approval. And the start of the contract was going to be January the 3rd. However, a letter was received by the Chair of PAWS Board on December the 10th, sent to Director Short. Director Short, and you have a copy of that letter indicating that the CEO that we've been working with is no longer with PAWS and that they are now in search for new leadership. And this CEO is the only one that we have been dealing with throughout this entire process and negotiating with. And as a result, we recommend that we place this contract on pause until such, until such time.
No pun, no pun intended.
Well, and I do want to say, you know, we've, we've had a lot of discussion around this table.
Yeah.
And when I talk to Deputy City Manager and others, the only person that they have negotiated with has been this leader. I mean, not board members, not other, solely this person.
Yes.
And now this person is gone. And so I don't know where that places us, but we just got to figure it out, because they've not had conversation with anyone else. No negotiations, not with the Board Chair, not with anyone, this person, and they're gone. So we got to, I agree with the Deputy City Manager about placing it on pause.
So you don't, you don't need a motion?
No, we don't need a motion, but we just wanted you to be aware so that if you get a text message, phone call, you know what we're dealing with.
That's my pooch. Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, that concludes the City Manager's agenda.
Okay, thank you. We go into the Clerk's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. For the Clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution counseling the January 4th and the February 1st 2022 proclamation sessions.
Motion for Counsel Woodson and seconded by Counsel House. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Item two is a resolution approving an honorary designation.
Motion by Counsel Huff and seconded by the choir on this side. I think it was Counsel Tucker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I'm sorry. Hit your button. There we go. Counsel Thomas.
Mayor Pro Tem, I think for the viewing audience, we need to say what those two resolutions were.
Yes, ma'am.
What they covered.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, Clerk, would you mind walking through those briefly, and then we'll move on?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. The first is an honorary designation to be located at Forest Road from Floyd Road to Chautauqua Road. This would be in honor of former Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner Pugh. The Board of Honor had voted at its December 9th meeting to approve this honorary designation. Item three, this is a resolution approving an honorary designation application. This one was submitted by Mr. James Johnson, and this would be located at Maryland Drive in honor of Mr. Otis Sisdrunk. And once again, this one was voted by the Board of Honor to approve.
Very good, very good. Do I hear a motion on the minutes? Counsel Woodson makes a motion, and Counsel Huff seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Next, we have board appointments. I will move past the mayor's appointment. And next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Personnel Review Board, have three alternate member seats that are open for nomination, the seat of Tracy Walker, Darlene Small, and Dr. Shanita Pettaway. And that's all I have on that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I did just want to also extend my congratulations to the upcoming retirement of Counsel Woodson. I know this was a hard decision for you to make, but just want to wish you all the best. I would always jokingly say to her, I didn't know where she would get the energy to be running to various meetings and meeting with constituents and doing all the things that she does for the constituents in District 7 and for the city as a whole. But I just want to say, as you seek some guidance from God in moving into that next chapter of your life, just please remember to pencil me in, find a way to pencil me in there somewhere, because we have had a good ride, and that ride's not going to end once you leave that seat. So, once again, just congratulations to you.
Well said. Counsel Huff.
Mayor, Counsel, City Managers, City Attorney, Staff, I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. It's been a pleasure getting through another year with you. Learned a lot, and I'll need you even more next year as we go into trying to fix a few more potholes and things that we need to get done. Thank you.
Well, if there's no further business, let me say on behalf of Mayor Skip Henderson, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and our staff, I wish you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and may you and your families enjoy the holiday season together. And we stand adjourned. Well, so moved. Removed, motion by Counsel Woodson and seconded by Counsel Tucker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.